So, we will call this meeting to order at exactly nine o'clock. Please join us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several timed items. Melanie, are there any additions or additions?
Not on what I know of.
Perfect. With that, we can go into our first item, anniversary pens. I don't see any of the folks getting their pens today, but appreciate you being here, Karen.
Thank you.
We have a ten-year anniversary pen for Darwin Johnson. He has now been with the county for ten years this quarter. And it's a long time to put up with us, so.
Sure.
Do you want to take a quick recess and I can run down the call?
Uh, we could take a recess or we could come back to this.
Okay. Because the assessor's department is not here either.
Right, oh.
I think Randy only might be coming to the doctor office, so I have to see what he's doing real quick when he comes up.
Right.
That's your service, that's what we do.
Well, how about we start one because we can move it around.
I haven't seen him. He's not in the office.
Well, let's move it around then, and we can just come back to it after. And see as folks show up, so. Because I'd like Darla to be here for her as well, and.
Oh, she's here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know she's here, but she's not here, so.
Now, does she know about it?
I think so.
Her department, I guess.
Okay.
So, probably not.
Okay.
All right. I gotta go see what Randy wants. I guarantee he's coming to our office.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Let's, we'll just hold off on a birthday moments then.
All right.
All right. And I know the guys in the jail, they won't be able to make it down here. Uh, next item, we'll just move down Judy Clark's Ninth Amendment to the OHA agreement. Melanie, do you want to give a brief overview of this?
So, this accounts for the changes in the budget. There is a hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars for contract increasing increase and an increase of two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and sixty six cents for growing alcohol education.
Does the board have any questions on this? Which one is it again?
The Nineteenth Amendment to OHA Agreement, uh, one five nine eight one eight. Judy says she might have trouble getting here today. But she would try.
Well, if the board's all right with it, there's no issue, we can act on this tomorrow. If Judy does make it today, we can come back to this and kind of get more of an overview. If you guys have any questions. Um, next item, we have David Berman, engineering contract for landfill.
David.
Good morning. Well, the, uh, the direction of the board back in December, you guys gave me direction to go for engineering services, as you guys all know, you guys were involved with it. It took me a while to get there, to determine on which engineering service we're gonna go with. And you guys thought it had to be to do, to do this. So, I came up with Anderson Engineering, come in with the best, being far back and most support. And what ACOM has given us, ACOM just, as things went on, we ran a bidding contract with ACOM since two thousand nineteen, just so you guys know that. That expired in two thousand nineteen. What we were having ACOM do, when they did do it, was the landfill superintendent manager, as needed, they'd call up, they can do service, that's how we were. You know, we weren't even in a contract with them at the time, so. Now, I didn't know this until just here recently, after we looked at it closer. They still were our engineering, like I said, we just, we called them as needed. They weren't scheduled to do nothing for us unless we asked them to write for us. So, that being said, I went with Anderson, Anderson put their quote together, they come in cheaper than what? Uh, seventy-four thousand and Darla Anderson has, uh, there's even a little bit more they're doing for us for the bank part, but for one, they're here. They're pretty handy if we need them to call. So, anyway, they come in forty-seven thousand for a annual, you take care of this. Top down. Now, as Barry questioned, the add-ons, you know, is that has to be approved by us before they can do it. They'll come and say, hey, we need to do this, or if you want us to do this, just specifically think that it's gonna be more of a charge because it's just more, we're asking more of the scope of the work that we asked for in the beginning. So, we gotta watch that, you know, we can't just let them have open reins, you know, and I get that, which they have to get approved all by me. Maybe surveying, anything like that, they have to run it by me before they go do a survey. I have to request it, if it is in this bid, the surveying, I ask them to do it, so. So, back to what you guys asked me to do, I went out and got the information that we need, and I recommend that we use Darla Anderson Engineering for the engineering for the house great.
So, I've got a couple of questions. So, um, since we weren't in a contract with, we're more in a service agreement with ACOM since two thousand nineteen. So, the contract with Anderson, is it covering the forty-seven thousand? Is it covering specific things? And then if there's any additional things, that will be added to it? Yes, okay. So then, is part of their contract, like, if the reporting on all the E Q stuff, will they let us know that, hey, we need to make this report?
Yeah, so, I'll be working right next to them. When they go out and do this surveying test, I'm gonna be standing there. They'll call me and I'll schedule that. Like, April thirteenth, DEQ's coming down, three people from DEQ's coming down. Me, the engineers, DEQ, we're gonna be walking around for the landfill. So, anything that takes place on the forty, I will be involved. Because I, for one, I asked to be, because I want to be in there for the education of it, and then also the, well, the education.
Background.
Yeah. So, yes, it's, any reporting, anything, and then a day, it covers every tiny, not tiny, you're poor. Any stormwater, any leachettes, wells, exam, or, you know, well testing, all being involved.
Yeah, and they, it's just, might be me, but it seems to me that they're more proactive on what we need than maybe ACOM was. Well, they were, and I think that's why we got behind on some things, because ACOM was a proactive one. You know, winding up with D two, the needs that.
Well, there's, there's a whole bunch to that, Mark. There was so, I don't even know where I'm gonna, but it just, there was just so much to it, because DEQ dropped the ball, the county dropped the ball, and the engineers dropped the ball.
Right.
So, it wasn't just one thing, it was a combination of it all. And we weren't following that. I mean, my first guess is if DEQ wasn't honest, we shouldn't be calling them, going, well, you haven't called us in a while. Well, it's calm before the storm. So, there's just some things that everybody dropped the ball on to, to got us in the predicament we were in. So, that's why I want to be involved, I want the engineers to be involved, I want DEQ to be involved. We need to, anytime any reporting, any of that, we all need to be in it, so. And I made that clear with the engineers, and they agree, they're like, that's what it should, so we're all in the know.
Thank you for getting that together for us, it makes, takes a big weight off our shoulders, yeah.
We're not there a hundred percent on some things, but we're getting there, let's put it that way. We're, we're, there are some good milestones down the last few weeks that I thought, oh my goodness, this is never gonna cover that well. It's starting to come around, it's kind of like, but there's still more to go, so, follow me, we'll get it, so.
I have a couple of questions on the, on just the final numbers here, the five hundred dollars administration time, five hundred dollars stormwater monitoring, is that for the annual?
Mm-hmm.
Is that annual cost? So, it just seems kind of low for all the stormwater monitoring that might be necessary over an entire year to be no more than five hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's the semi-annual testing, so, yeah.
Twice a year, twice a year.
Just twice a year, that's, that's all they do? Because it's the same.
Well, the monitoring of the, the monitoring of the, like, the monitoring of the stormwater, that's just driving why I'm looking at it, if it's coming out, then they have to take a test, but if it's not coming out, they don't have to test it.
Right.
See what I'm saying? So, it's, I, I can still do that, it's, it's done by them, and by me. However, day I ran it out, I'll look at it, and if water's coming out, I gotta get a test.
Right.
And then I monitor it down, if it's not coming out, I note that, check it on February tenth, that the frozen ground, no water coming out. And then DEQ kind of like said, well, here's my monitoring report, you know, it's just a word document that I fill out once a month. So, it is, it's pretty simple stuff, it's not, it doesn't take a lot of time.
Yeah.
It's much.
So, maybe it's overpriced.
Yeah.
No, it is, it's generic.
I suppose, I know.
Okay. We won't fix that too.
No, it's just, I know there's more, more events than just two per year. And so, I want to make sure that we're not going to be charged additional dollars, you know, five hundred dollars to do all the monitoring that might be necessary.
That's all included, and anything above beyond that, if something comes up, that's, that's what we charge.
Right. Any other questions?
No.
Got my concerns.
Yeah, for me, and on yours, Barry likes, they've got to run it by me, and if I don't agree with anything, well.
Yeah, and they have that right to.
We need to, we'd say that's part of the engine.
Yeah, and that was gonna be probably one of my bigger questions as well, so, go ahead, that's kind of.
And they've been great, that Anderson Engineering so far has helped tremendously on just some things they didn't have, just so you know.
Excellent.
It's just, it's been, yeah, they've been very supportive.
All right, um, any other questions? We'll move forward and act on that tomorrow then.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Take care.
Yeah, take care of Darla, Darwin Johnson.
Sure. Exhausted. My wife forced me into taking the coat off today, so.
Oh.
I'm just resourceful, but I was wise, I put it on, it's still numb from everything here, here is still numb, so.
But you're right-handed.
I'm right-handed, no, I'm, I'm left-handed.
Oh, you are.
I do sports right-hand, but I'm not, not doing any sports for a while, so, I'll be okay, hopefully it'll come back.
Well, um, we've got your, um, ten-year anniversary pen here. Ten years with the county.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's really cool.
Thinking on the first day coming down, it's my wife's birthday. The actual date's March first, so I launched your ten years ago, coming down from Burns and left her there for four months. For the first four months, I actually worked Monday through, you know, usually Thursday, you know, noonish or so. I'd, I'd work late and get my hours in, and, uh, which was really good, to have quiet time after hours too, that first few months where they were really studying our zoning ordinance and stuff like that, but. Yeah, it was great, it was hard, it was hard, we had three, four kids at the time when I left and, and, uh, but I spent, ended up spending more nights at home than I did actually down here, but lived with Joyce and Prairie Collins for that time. They gave me a room, and it was awesome.
Wow.
It was awesome. Went quick, you know, we rented forever, and then finally, year and a half, almost two years ago, now, we finally bought. God send blessings, for sure. But man, it's been a joy, I love it, and I don't plan to go anywhere, so. Hope five, you know, four years, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, yeah. Love my job, appreciate the flexibility you guys offer, all employees, not just me, but, you know, it's, it's been a rough couple of last few weeks, but other than that, most, most time it's smooth sailing, you know, I appreciate the board. I've had such a great working relationship with the board over the years. And, you know, and unfortunately, I don't know what's going on with the times that we're having, but we've had a lot of appeals. Hopefully, it's just that bump in the road, and then we'll get back on it. So, we said, but it's, it's kind of good for a new board to experience some of what that means. Um, and I hate saying that, because I hate appeals, but.
Yeah.
I know, I know, but it's, it's good, you know, most of you don't have any sort of planning, land use planning back then.
Yeah.
Um, I remember Commissioner Winters had been through it before personally, he kissed her head as well, um, and Sean, and you guys have, you know, federal and state backgrounds and some things too, but, but, you know. Land use planning is a different beast, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's tough in Oregon to making everybody happy, you know. It seems like our land use system gives people the opportunity to fuss at anything, and, and, you know, I guess that can be good, but, um, for the most part, we're doing a heck of a job, I think, protecting ag land and, and, uh, really allowing people still the opportunity to develop and have their personal property rights, which is something that was part of the reasons I was hired, I think, because I was, I was for development, at least on the, on the home side of things, knowing that, you know, all of our stuff in the seventies got blanket-sown as agriculture, even though all these lots existed, and it's undersized lots scattered throughout the valley, and, and especially at the north, and more than, more than I expected, uh, to see before I jumped the job, but, um, it was similar to Harnett County where it came from, and so I was very pleased with, with coming here, knowing I was dealing with the same type of people that were very conservative minded, and it was down-to-earth, you know, their logical thinking is, you know, the salt of the earth.
So, well, we haven't, we haven't had ten years with you, but I just want to.
Do I miss everybody else, was there a big, other ten people?
No, we had like twenty people in here earlier, so, yeah. Yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
I think the five year was smaller, wasn't it?
Yeah.
About the same size.
Yeah, but that one says ten years, so.
Well, I appreciate that, so, we shaking hands?
That's what I'm making.
So, Darwin.
Kisses babies, and all that kind of stuff.
So, Darwin, before you head out.
Mm-hmm.
We had a, a property owner that bought some property, and they wrote a letter to you and Jen about you and Jen, on how well you guys took care of them and how professional they were.
Yeah.
And so, the whole board and, and Ms. Melanie were happy to award you
Cool.
with a certificate of appreciation, as maybe a little token for that. And it's also for Jen too, might as well kill this one.
Do you grab her?
Although I was hoping that Jen would come back in here, but, yeah.
She's busy, she's seeing a customer coming in, and that just shows you, yeah, how good she takes care of the problem.
I'll tell you, my, my part is.
She'll get back to her.
Yeah, you know, what's interesting about getting these is, um, it's all Jen, I think. Did you guys get that? It's all Jen. I mean, if I'm not, if I'm not in the office for summers, especially lately, and some of these folks were waiting to get fired, if I remember the right folks, man, man names. But, you know, Jen's, Jen's explaining it at the beginning, and I'm doing my part, and then she's, she's finishing it up. And so, she's, she's often at both ends of it, and, uh, you know, my, my step is small, one step. You know, when you start going through septic and building permits and getting all your inspections, that's a lot. And to keep people on track on that end is a big deal, and, uh, most of them are so new to this stuff. I mean, land use, everybody's new to that, but when you, when you go get that done, and she, she carried it on through, so. All my credit goes to her.
You're both rock stars, and we really appreciate the work that you both do, and I know Jennifer does a lot, answering phone calls and letting interference and everything, but, uh, yeah, I mean, you both, you both make a really good team, and we're both very, we're all very appreciative of all the work you guys do.
We're a great team, man. Karen, Karen obviously is there to fill in when we're needing her help too, so.
Karen and Karen, all you guys, so, thank you.
Great team down there.
You're in our prayers still, I can't wait till you're a hundred percent again, like.
All the time, yeah.
Take care of yourself, yeah.
It's a long while, they tell me it could be up to a year, some of that stuff you're feeling, and whatever after that year you're, you're stuck with. So, whatever it has, we're gonna travel, so. I don't know, you'll be all right. Move along, you're halfway there, you know, build. All right, thanks, guys.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're playing Commissioner, I call it if you guys want.
I know, wait a second.
Oh, sorry, what did I miss?
Do you want to be here for the easement beyond, um, thirty-one A discussion?
Sure, yeah. Are we doing that right now?
We can, since you have.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can just move down to that.
So, I think I could give you enough of a background, if you've got the information in front of you. ODOT's changing, um, what's the word I always use for that corner? It's not obnoxious, but it's malfunction junction, right?
Yeah.
Um, down here, the Chevron, the Mexican restaurant, and.
Right.
New Dollar General, all that. And the only other corner I didn't really mention was where Dan's Auto used to be. So, we got that in this October's deeded properties to us because of foreclosure. And now, ODOT, because they're changing that right away, they're needing, just in a simple easement, because they're gonna be changing some of the sidewalks and doing all that. As a property owner, we at the county probably got one for this corner here, and probably the north corner as well, north west corner, and I've got one in from my own property across the street, so, um, pretty simple thing, it's just an easement, um, could be even temporary.
I remember.
This one's permanent, okay, mine across the street.
Well, it, so, it's interesting, because it's the permanent easement of the sidewalk. What's that?
Been the last three years, I think.
Yeah, but it's, uh, got twenty, this is where I was confused, was, uh, it has a permanent easement for twenty-five square feet of that sidewalk, another permanent easement for sixteen square feet, and then there's a temporary easement work area of six hundred and seventy-two square feet. Is that because of the work that they intend to do, or is it just the temporary easement?
Yeah, because they'll, they'll have to work on the other side of the sidewalks, and so, you know, along the sidewalk is where they'll be working, so.
Okay.
The, so, to sum this up really shortly, is that, you know, we're not selling really, other than, you know, an easement, and so, no land is actually leaving our hands permanently, and, and again, this is a foreclosure property, so when they were taking off a large chunk of this property, it'd be kind of a big deal, but to me, this is a no, no deal. I mean, no big deal at all, we simply, let's do it, and, and then when I go and sell these properties, after your, your guys' approval and board order to, to sell these foreclosure properties, uh, hopefully May, as long as it's on track, um, then we will, uh, just disclose that there's these easements. I'll keep a, a copy of everything that's in your package, now the signed copies, and hand them out to folks when they see. And they can read through it and, you know, do their due diligence and understand, oh, you know, we're selling this as is, and it comes with these couple easements, so. I mean, we're not, and we had a talk about this property and wanting to keep it on for any county purpose, but no, I don't see it's wanting to do that. Wouldn't, shouldn't even be my recommendation, so, yeah, this is the slam dunk.
And it, and it's for a handicap access to the.
Yeah, they're changing all of our amps and stuff, and just making sure that, you know, yeah, it's all N A A compliance.
Yeah, it's part of the SCOW Act, uh, stuff that we've been talking about for a long time, but I think it's just.
It's like sixty thousand total.
Like all communities are having to submit, so, I mean, it's. I mean, you look at the ramps we have, really, they need replaced already.
I think, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was, it was a lawsuit issue that actually came out, and they had to go and change everything. So.
And I don't have all the particulars of that.
That is why.
That sums it up. So, so, yeah, I mean, my recommendation for this is definitely approval, you know, we'll just disclose it in the sale, and, well, I hope within.
Basically takes off a corner and.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's literally to even take off a corner, it just kind of, it's a, it's a little snakes with a wheelchair ramp, but also good.
It shouldn't change functionality of that lot at all. I mean, the lot, you know, it's got that building, it's got some, you know, paved, um, area on the north and, and kind of east. You know, it's, it's been an auto sale place before, I know we've already got people interested in it for the sale. People always are checking right in October, November, and now about it. People are thinking, ooh, food cart area or something else, um, right there, you know, close, where everybody can see it.
Right.
But we'll see, I mean, we auctioned it sixty percent through a market value, and hopefully it gets a bit.
Yeah, it's not, it's not gonna fix the issues of the dysfunction junction.
No.
It's, yeah.
We'll see now, because I, I remember looking at those plans, it's been a while ago, I don't know, I don't know, I'll take ourselves up, the trouble changes every section.
Right. Okay. So, procedure-wise, um, we act on this tomorrow, what would be our recommendation, your recommendation?
Yeah, approve.
Guys, basically just to approve.
Yeah, approve, sign it, uh, scan it, email back, uh, they may want hard copies at some point, so, put those in the mail. But we should, we scan it, mail, email back, we keep them all.
Right. But we'd be approving not only the permanent easement, but also the temporary easement.
And there's, there's nothing legally, like, we need to deal with other than the main you're holding out.
Sounds good.
Yeah, sounds good.
So, Chair, do you want to discuss the thirty-one A ordinance?
Um,
Darwin?
Sure, we can, we can start having some of that discussion, uh, I think, I, I actually haven't been able to touch base with Evan this morning, uh, Mr. Hawk. So, um, so, thirty-one A, the ordinance on that, basically, just for you guys, it's, uh, it sets up kind of a procedure on who's to pay for the initial sign, once, uh, we name a road. If there's three, correct me if I'm wrong, Darwin, but three people live on a road, they can, they get it named, we, we go through that process. We actually did it up there, so we're like, I believe last time, we ended up doing it, we had a meeting on this. And you guys take dollars out of your fund right now to pay for the cost of that first initial sign, correct?
Yeah, so, ordinance has three options for a road name. Option C is when you've got three or more people living on a road.
Okay.
That's the one we almost always use, we haven't taken the advantage of the other two options, which are just, we name it if we wanted it.
Right.
But under this, it becomes a health and safety issue, it mainly becomes a numerical issue, because I can't fit, you know, if you've got a house here and a house here, and then it's zero and two, I can't put another even number in between, right? And so, I have to then, you know, rename a road and, and then renumber them according to the coordinate system that you guys have used for, for addressing, and so, uh, you know, the, the third, the problem with that ordinance that I've always had is that, that, uh, and we have to discuss this a whole lot, but it, it really puts that third owner into a really bad situation, where they're gonna now make their two other neighbors have to renumber and readdress and go through all the paperwork mess that that creates for them, but also, they are stuck with the bill of paying a two-hundred admin fee, which gets us published in the paper, and it gets us into this hearing, and notes all the adjacent owners, not just those two, but anyone that might be on that road with a future potential of a home size looking address. And then, they also pay for at least one sign, and usually, most people won't want to pay for one sign. I mean, it's already four hundred and fifty dollars at that time, because the first sign is a two-fifty, and two-fifty thereafter, if you want two or more signs, um, another two-fifty each time. So, um, this last road that we named, which was a mile and a half off of Christmas Holiday Highway, just north, was finalized as, as Stage Coach Lane.
Yeah, Stage Coach Lane.
And it was a five, five and a half mile stretch, which ended up having, you know, every mile. And it was a five five and a half mile stretch, which ended up having, you know, every mile and you sign needed. And thankfully, some other, you know, um owners along that road, when they got the notice, they said, hey, I'd like to sign at this corner as well, not just the corner they're paying for down off of of the corner of like Christmas Tree and and Stagecoach Lane. Anyway, so it it'd be really nice if we, and I've talked a little about this as well over the years, is that if we get a committee set up and and really go through and and look at the roads, I mean, it's gonna be a task, but look at some of these unnamed roads and figure out which ones we want to name. About seven or eight years ago, um off of Fossil Lake Road, um we we got into naming uh Lake Lane and uh Clanneth Lane. Um I had done a study of of just from Lost Forest South and thought, hey, how about we just use all the working counties and just do them alphabetically running south and that's where those two fell. There's a couple historical paths out there like Reggie Lane and also Oster Farm Lane that that would have needed a renaming to fit into that. Um and and of course, at that time, it's a different historical name, that was fine. Trying to go back and I know it, let me circle back, I know I took you down a long path there, but um yeah, the the problem that I see with this ordinance is that I collect the money and then we end up having to transfer money back to the road department. The real reason this is all getting brought up is because there are some historical road signs that are out there like Fur Mac that aren't county roads, they they're non-county roads and so, but they've had these, you know, wood plaques or something that are not very visible. Some some were a lot lower and so you really couldn't see them. Um Stagecoach Lane, you had this at one point.
Yeah.
And and of of the thing, so. You know, that we don't have anywhere an ordinance that addresses who pays for, who collects, who, you know, fee for other roads that are out there that that may be completely private roads, although, you know, they have to stay open and and how we're going to have a uniform system of having a nice uh, you know, road sign that's that's the same as all the other road signs in the county, whether it's private or not or county or not, so.
Right.
That needs to be addressed and and I know that's why this is on the on the guys' agenda and, you know, whatever discussion. I haven't I haven't talked with with the road superintendent myself, but if if uh we want to simplify it, my my suggestion would be to have the road department take care of this program. You know, if they want to collect a fee from the, you know, adjacent and try to hassle with that, so be it, you know. If someone's making a crest or request, we should be able to send them to the road department because they're the ones that actually do the installation of the signs. You know, there's there's no training or anything to me that needs to go along with this. It's just simply if you guys want to work with them and adopt a fee schedule for those neighbors. Um but we're talking at very minimal cost and to me, I know the road department budget is what it is and it's always suffered because of our timber receipts and this and that, but but uh, you know, a road sign, I mean, it's health and safety. I mean, if it's if there's people living down the road, there needs to be a sign. We sell at cost, you know, at cost and we're not worried about making money on replacement signs and stuff like that. Uh if people want a new new red plaque that we use or you can read the five-digit address, you know, crossways that says like county on it, we sell those at cost. I mean, this to me should be not a moneymaker, it should be a health and safety thing where we just take care of the systems that have to live on roads that need the signs replaced.
And and so when you're talking about the health and safety, you're talking about like for EMS to be able to know what street in with what the ambulances and everything else and just finding directions to those.
That that kind of goes back to that, even road naming, uh unnamed road anyways. I mean, you know, you got two or three people might be on a road already and it's not named, let's just get it named. You know, I I don't, I hate that it's about, because if I would get those people going, you know, well, it's actually, I'm past those two. You know, I'm past the two, the zero and the two, can I just be four, can I be eight and then maybe sneak a couple other people in between me as well, you know, down the road. You know, to me, that's just, it's not safe and it's not, um we've got a road and it's especially the Pen Phillips ones where we know they're supposed to remain open and there's easements and where they're platted roads, let's get them named and let's move forward instead of, you know, kind of getting like, you know, working backwards a lot of time, dealing costs in those next developed developing properties.
I think it's always just come down to the cost of the signs, you know, and maintaining them. Like I think it was you telling me a story about a lady out in uh Fields in Hardy County.
Yeah.
Who had a road named Stairway to Heaven.
Yeah.
And that sign got stolen so many times.
Yeah.
And finally, it just got to a point, I think you were telling me the county basically said, you're gonna have to rename your road.
Yeah.
Because we can't keep paying for getting the sign replaced and that's a lot of time.
And she was the only person on that road and she named it and she really loved her sign, but yeah, it was kind of a waste and.
Yeah. So I mean, if she wanted to pay for the replacing the sign, fine, but even then, uh.
Well, getting down to Fields wasn't a short drive either.
Well, yeah.
Nothing like the.
Exactly. Well, that's just it, like replacing the cost of replacing the sign, subtracting the cost of the actual sign itself is costly. Because you got a work crew, you got guys going out there, they gotta put up a new one.
And I'm not, yeah, and I'm not trying to pretend that I know the budget for the actual cost, I I see it. Um you know, we've only done probably five or six of these road names since I've been here nineteen years. You know, it's it's an interesting experience when we go through it, but.
If we rename every, we name every road like we should probably should for health and safety reasons, the initial cost is going to be.
It could be substantial, yeah. And I'm not saying you have to, I'm not saying you have to name one if somebody's not on it yet, but it would be nice to use a pattern, use some kind of philosophy behind this so that, you know, it can be a uniform system um moving forward. Now, you're gonna have those Oster Farm lanes and the Bowens lanes and and whatever else that might fall in between that are historic in nature, but.
Uh this is the road department, Kevin Hawk is calling in. Morning, Kevin.
Morning.
Hey, we were just having a discussion actually about the road stuff. Uh how are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good. We're on the subject of ordinance thirty-one A.
Good.
Just discussing.
Morning, Kevin. I'm also in here, the Starwood Johnson Plan Director, so.
Yep. So.
So yeah, I if we were to, you know, like like going back to, you know, um Lost Forest Lane, driving south, you know, thinking, hey, let's use all the county road names or uh as names, you know, the county counties as road names. You know, it it would be a nice pattern to use. Um I looked at all the Pen Phillips spots and said, okay, there's a Pen Phillips road that, you know, heads east off of um Fossil Lake Lane here, uh Fossil Lake Road, sorry. And we could fit another county on this spot and then just I worked my way down and so, you know, that takes care of that stuff there. Now, when you go over to Milliken and, you know, on either side of Milliken, you know, it's a little bit different, you know, but there's only East Campbell Lane is, I think, the only one that actually goes all the way back over to Milliken uh in between Fossil Lake and Milliken Road. So obviously, though, we're not, we wouldn't be changing historical roads and stuff like that. It's something to consider and again, I'm not I'm not saying I've got all this figured out. I mean, there's a lot of spots I don't have figured out yet. But if, you know, really comes down to, yeah, we want to undertake this task and and where where are we gonna fund it from? But I've got a ton of spots that that are really exceeding that third house already and and really ought to have a road named and all that kind of stuff. They're not county roads and and, you know, we we understand that, we explain that in the office all the time. It's it's for you guys to maintain as neighbors, as a neighborhood, whatever, um but, you know, you guys got to figure it out. But, you know, having a road sign up is important. Some people, I mean, just getting their packages, getting emergency services out to them, whatever the case may be.
The only problem I see, well, one of the problems I see with naming the non-county roads is as soon as we put a county sign up or the road department puts a county sign up, people assume that it's a county road.
To maintain.
And then we should maintain. Uh we've already had that problem with the Lake County numbered signs. And so I think it's just something that we need to talk about, um make it clear. But I get the health and safety deal because the EMS person up in Silver Lake or Christmas Valley was saying, you know, sometimes when they go out on those calls and they say, we're on this road or.
Yeah.
They're having problems getting there and so.
It happened not just just a little while ago. They were out there looking for a property for, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes, looking for this one person's house. And uh it happens and that's not a long time if you're needing an ambulance. But again, like we've always kind of had the policy of just if two or more people live on the road or three people, um we name it. We could name, we could name more uh for those for those reasons. If there's like too many roads in one single area or something, you know, landmarks to guide and different things, we can definitely name a few extra. But again, I think it, one of the things I I wanted to put this on the agenda for was is the cost of not just putting that initial sign up, but future sign replacement. It's it can be really costly and so uh and I'm just kind of thinking, you know, for discussion sake, you know, where do we uh, we need to give our departments a little bit of guidance and give them some direction because it's not it's not made clear in the ordinance is who's gonna pay and who's gonna foot foot that bill for especially for replacement signs.
And then the labor involvement put up too is what you gotta consider.
Right. Right, and that would typically fall our our road department. So. I don't think it's fair to just uh expect our road department guys to um spend dollars doing things that they're not actually obligated to do or directed to do by us or an ordinance. So we're looking at maybe altering the ordinance or changing it or giving some direction. I felt like we should we should at least have that discussion today so you guys were kind of aware of what we were looking at. We don't have to make a decision today, but um. Kevin, do you have any any thoughts on this?
Um well, well, I think it was Mark that was speaking there just before, what he had mentioned about when the public sees a road, this department truck puts signs up then, they also too, they assume, they assume that then that's a county maintained road. Um and and even with all the communication of, you know, describing it as a local access, unmaintained local access road. In in some cases, um already, already three times just this year, so we're only into February, we we actually have already replaced um two, two signs, three signs um that are joined Christmas Valley Highway. And a lot of time what happens is the signs that are joining the main road, um we we end up making them and replacing them uh right off the bat, trying trying to consider the the need for emergency services. The ones that and and they and that's the cost. I mean, there's the cost that's absorbed in, you know, into the sign line item and the road department budget, but also the time and and manpower to go do it. Um what happens is then somebody sees us replacing one of those signs where it's joining the main road and then there's phone calls for, well, this sign's down and it's somewhere way off the beaten path. Um we we struggle with that all the time constantly. In regards to your comment about who of course cost to us.
Not to get into the weeds, but, you know, we've talked about, you know, having like a road district, you know, kind of thing. Up in the, especially in the north end of the county. So we could kind of start working on some of these road issues for these roads that aren't a road taxing district, so to speak. So that we could not only have some, there'd be some dollars to work on those roads, uh but also uh there'd be some organization to look for other dollars, other places to do main builds or whatever, what have you. And I know Commissioner Albertson, you were working on that for a little bit of time. I think that was mainly pre-COVID, but uh. Again, I I'm not I'm not entirely sure it's it's appropriate to put it off on the planning department either to bear the cost of replacing people's signs simply because they it has a funny name or something that someone wants on it at all and they go and steal the sign or what have you.
And those are the ones, and those are the ones that usually get, those are the ones that usually get stolen.
Right.
We we end up, we end up going to, you know, if somebody cuts a corner too close, a lot of those. There's a lot of low block that drove that because the road structure themselves are not large and they don't have big intersections, they get run over by people pulling a camp trailer or something and then they need a new base pound it and and a new tail bar. But even to go do that and put put a sign back up, you still have well over a hundred dollars and just do it. I that's if, that's if we're in Christmas Valley doing, you know, the signing truck is in Christmas Valley doing all the work, so.
Right, and I.
I missed, I missed and I apologize, uh the Darwin was, when I come on the call there, Darwin was discussing, there's there's more um roads between Milliken and Fossil Lake. I think you, I think I caught somebody saying that are needing to be named now currently.
Yeah, there there's a couple. Um there's a couple off of Bowens as well. There's um definitely a couple off the east side of Fossil Lake. It's this is a tough, tough uh, you know, task to undertake, especially for me, right? But it's, I mean, it takes a couple of months to go through a road naming, uh with all the noticing to adjacent owners and all that and the hearings that you have. That's why I think, you know, it'd be nice to undertake it in a in a large batch and just kind of just say, hey, but get a committee first together and say, hey, what what should we name, what what could we name right now? Um what do we want to name but not put a sign up yet? Um and and then, you know, and I agree with you a hundred percent that that I I wish there was some way that we could name name these and put up signs and have something on them that says not a county road, you know, like. But you know, and maybe it's just an abbreviation or something that they have to get familiar with, but um non-county maintained something. Maybe it's just a different color or something, I don't know, or maybe a border around it or.
May maybe we, the unnamed Pen Phillips roads or the public ways that aren't county to stop people from stealing them because they have a good name, maybe we should just have a number. And have a number with a border, uh non-maintained, you know, and. Just an idea.
Yeah, you know.
The number, the number is a good, the number actually is a good idea. That that keeps people from, that that cuts down the desire of wanting somebody to hang that on their on their dorm room wall, if you will. You know, for instance, Ivory Clay, Ivory Clay, Few Valley Road, I don't know how many times, just 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 in the last calendar year and there's a reason for that and that's because if you take a razor knife and you take the E off of it, it looks cool on a dorm room, you know, wall. So um the number thing is.
It's not even mature about that at all.
Well, at any rate, I mean, I'm, that's my assumption, but the the my point being, the number is a very good idea. And one other thing to consider if you're, if is the standardization of it. Um because local access roads will always be local access. And so a number and the abbreviation L A R for local access road might standardize and start to allow for people to recognize this is an unmaintained local access road. The number would identify it with EMS, the public would identify it with L A R that it's a local access road. What what you're going a public way, I'm just saying local access is the Texas. What, what you're calling a public way, I'm just saying local access is the technical term in statute.
Any thoughts on that, Darwin?
Well, just my thoughts on L A R would be it looks a lot like Lake Road almost, you know, LA Road. I almost wanted to say public way, P W or something, I don't know, I, I understand the legal thing and we can. But yeah, something needs to be done and, and, uh, the number thing, you know, the, historically, um, before we got into road names in the early two thousand, I believe it was. And, and actually a uniform address system going away from like, um, you know, the county road and then a number and that's, that's the road you lived on was county road, this, you know, number. It almost seems if we, if we did that, it might be a step back, but I, I don't know, I mean, we, we, we gotta have something uniform, um. I'm, I'm a crazy woman who would say, hey, let's give it, you know, by the thousand increment into, that's how, you know, it's something west, something, you know, north or whatever. We don't need to shoot that, but, but you can't ever get anything wrong that way. And whatever we want to do, I, I think we ought to have a committee, um, and, and then.
And EMS should probably.
I'm not in a hurry on this, that's, that's for sure. Like I said, I've only done, you know, you know, six or seven road names, um, since I've been here, so. You know, in the ten years, so we're not under the gun and have to do this today, but it would be nice moving forward and, and. And it, and it's a public awareness too, it's, and it should, you know, if we do it right and get enough, you know. Um, hold the meetings up in North Lake or even if they're remote, we could easily, um, we could easily. You know, get that public awareness out there and make sure we all understand, um, you know. And, and it's, it's a big training, right? I mean, it's just, it's like what I'm going to do with the sword meeting tonight. You don't know what you don't know, and so if, if people are, you know, explaining, I mean, even as, as a building and, and planning staff, if. You know, we can give a simple handout, so once you, hey, what's a county road, what's a public way? And we can start handing those out at the beginning, uh, you know, of the process instead of, you know, down the road in the process where they realize, oh, you're the third. And now you're gonna pay for this new road naming process that we're gonna go through. And guess what? Just because you're paying for it doesn't mean we're gonna go with your suggestion and that happens often.
What would we have, what would they have to rename their road, um, being the third person on, on the road or?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that, like I.
I mean.
Mentioned in my example before, the zero and the three, but that's because it's our ordinance, I mean.
Right, but if we ended up go, forming a committee and having the road, having a number assigned to it, then technically it would.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we could avoid this altogether and, and that's what I'd like to see because I hate, hate, you know, saying, oh, you're the first and you're the second. And going, guys, guess what? If you ever get another neighbor, we're gonna have to renumber you. And, and you're gonna be on a totally different road and, and that's, that's something, it's unnecessary.
Well, and, and I suppose that there's nothing to prohibit the people from living on that road at some other time, point in time from coming to us and wanting to. Do away with the number on their road and get an actual name.
Mm-hmm. Actually.
Yeah. But in the meantime, it would possibly solve a little bit of our issue.
Well, and that number could coincide with, you know, we number everything and, but we could also have a coinciding. Name that is associated with that, that later we will apply the name, you know. And just like now, I mean, all our roads have a number, the county roads have a number with them, associated with them, but they also have a name. We could do, we need to just do the reverse and say, well, we'll put a number right now, later we'll put the name on it once we get people living on it. And, and we'll just know, and I'll, I'll add this at the, yeah, that's the number you're on, but it's, it's actually.
Another thing too, we can do is eastern west roads could be odd numbers and north and south could be even. Just, just to do.
Well, they're lanes, so, so, you know, eastern west are lanes, north and south are.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, so as long as the weather.
So. We, we give a number and, and say.
The weather.
Yeah.
Yep.
We can go all and.
Or.
At the end of the number. Well, I think. Maybe a suggestion, Chair, uh, maybe we table this until Darwin's a little healthier and we promote that committee together. And of course we'll have our road superintendent, Darwin from the planning and my EMS to help on that committee.
Yeah, it sounds good to me.
Get a full plan in place.
Yeah. But. Good luck for other examples from other counties who may be experiencing some struggles.
Sure. All right, well, until we can kind of have a better plan in place, I mean, I appreciate the discussion this morning, it's good to have these thoughts. Um, we'll just hold off on putting this back on the agenda for now.
I think what, what we could do is wait until you're ready.
Yeah.
And bring it forward again, say, you know.
It's fine with me.
Yeah, the tough part is for me, I just don't know. I mean, all the stuff that's coming up, I wish I could say.
It appeals out.
A hundred percent and everything's gonna be good, but yeah, we got a lot on our plates from a couple of months ago that we still need to deal with and then yeah, move forward. We're busy, we're swamped right now. And Lanceell's coming up and we've got a lot to prepare for that, so. All right, thanks for the discussion and I'll keep working with you guys and let you know. Kevin, I'll, I'll certainly be reaching out to you and we'll try to get this moving forward if that's what counts.
Sometime.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Kevin, um.
Thank you. Yep.
Real quick, uh, Jennifer.
Yeah.
I saw you come in and I just wanted to, uh, let you know Darwin's got something for you.
Oh, he was.
Yeah, come on up.
Stop me. They presented to both of us the man.
Mark and.
Had you come down.
Give it. Yeah, we wanted you to have this, um, we all kind of worked on it, appreciation, Mark, we'll kind of give a little bit of backstory on this.
So we got a letter from a person that just bought property, they commented on how well you and Darwin took care of them and how they retreated. And so we wanted to give you a little token of our appreciation as a board. On how we appreciate your work ethic and your professionalism and. Would you give a little?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Was it that, was that Mindy Man- Manley? Manley?
Yes, it was.
She went on and on to me one day and said, why don't you send that to the. And she said, she said, okay, I will. She said, C C P, I got two.
Yeah, so any of our employees that can talk a customer into writing them.
Yeah, good and bad. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Like Troy Erber.
Yeah. I enjoy it. I was leaving in here yesterday morning on holiday. I didn't have the V Q back. I'm like, why are we working on Monday?
You're not getting another appreciation.
No.
Um, with the board's permission, I would like to take a quick two minute, three minute break and we can come back in at ten o'clock.
That sounds great.
All right, start next time, dial.
So we start at five with the sword meeting tonight.
Okay.
Six, then we'll do the regular planning commission and we'll probably get back in.
He knows his house is terrible, we're not really enforcing it.
Want to make sure you want to help me at least, uh, yep. For the road.
Oh, to the planning commission, oh, okay. And I, I'm gonna give you guys an update on, um, we lost our planning commission chair.
So, when you go to Boise this weekend, yes?
Yeah.
Nice.
Who's that?
Wes Davies.
Yeah, we had fun, we did really well, actually.
Larry. Really?
Yeah, a fan that bought a big slaughtering factory out there.
Wow.
They're, they're a huge, old timey dollar.
What was it?
Yeah, right.
Uh, Wes Davies, Missouri, they, they bought a big slaughtering facility.
Well, it is, well, it is.
Cooperation operators.
Oh, okay, yeah, so we got one in.
Body tells the world.
Yeah, they took on a big project.
Four eleven.
Did they sell their?
They're all down.
Isn't Marvin, he's.
Did they sell?
No, they're, they're gonna try to lease it out, but it's still for sale.
Kara's fault, she just turned twelve, it's a very.
I don't know, they, if they've sold it, that's news to me, but.
No, Marvin's seven, he's eighteen.
I mean, they just.
Yeah, yeah, she has seven, yeah, yeah.
We'll be looking for new chairs.
So she has.
All right, buddy.
Yeah, and we'll see you.
These are.
They're.
We'll see you.
Uh, Addie, Addie, um. Older one.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, but they had fun, they. They played well, it was, oh my God, it was a crazy drive.
Oh, my God.
Did you leave Saturday or Friday? We left Friday about, let's see, I left, I picked the kids up like at twelve thirty from school and then we left early. And we got there into Boise, oh my gosh, well, time changed too. Um, it took us. Oh, gosh, when did we get in? It was late, it was like eight or something.
Oh, I thought it was terrible, yeah.
Yeah, oh, it was nuts. When we were on the highway there, um, from Ontario on. It has, it started snowing, but like before that, we didn't have any snow. It was, it's clear here.
Okay.
When we left. So we just like smoked down, you know, till we got there and then, then everything froze. So there was this layer of ice and there were vehicles everywhere. I mean, it was just like. At least when they said.
We don't know how it is.
Extortion, it was high centered upon the median, the cement median in the middle of the, the freeway. It was like the, you know, like it had driven up on the median, so it's high centered and it slid up.
Oh, my gosh.
I don't know how they did it, but it was stuck there. Yeah, and then there were all sorts of jacknicks trucks and, uh, you know, people just stopped right there because they don't want to go any further.
Yep, they just got.
Stuck in the middle of the road.
Yeah, in the middle.
Yeah.
So then you guys came home Sunday?
We did and, and the roads were good then.
Yeah.
Before that next storm hit, but then we look at Saturday morning, I mean, there was probably. I don't know, like eight inches of snow at least in Boise, downtown Boise.
Okay.
Which is a.
I've heard of, yeah.
Uh, we were driving, we had to get to the school at seven thirty. It's like there's nobody out, I mean, there were a few people, but not very many. Oh, yeah. Only a different night for you.
There's so much, there's a place here, have a fall and then, because they got wet skiing.
Yeah, I know.
Games and stuff, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we're early in the night now, so, so Boise is kind of crazy.
I know. It is, and it was nice when I. We were not together, you know, flights and we had to breakfast for mom and say, and. Um, we had a really good breakfast place in Boise.
Where'd you go?
Um, it's called Golden.
I love it, it's my favorite, oh, yeah.
Oh, good, yeah.
It's me and I was gonna say, she went to the glass.
Yeah, oh, it was, it was.
Did you have to wait to get in?
We need to go ahead, open back up.
Just.
Yeah.
It is, and I, just a few minutes after ten. Um, the next.
It was tiny.
The next item on our list is.
It was. It is, it was so good, yeah.
Oh, my God.
Commissioner Albertson, be a Parks and Rec discussion.
Like when that.
So.
Yeah, it was small.
You know, it literally doesn't matter what we're doing. No, no, we're fine.
Yeah, yeah, that was, it was good.
Hi.
Some ladies.
I found it, I came out.
Melissa.
I don't know, what?
All right.
Am I talking to over you guys? I'm sorry, I guess I'm sorry. Just talking about good food in Boise.
And you could actually go there?
Yeah, we can go in.
Oh, that's good.
So we're, we're, sorry to interrupt you.
No.
I'd like to have you come up and I'll tell you kind of what I want to do as far as the.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec and then the Trails Committee and.
Just sit in that chair.
You can sit.
This is always so awkward. So.
So.
Yeah.
The idea that I wanted to bring before the Trails Committee and Tony couldn't be here because she couldn't get off work.
Sure.
What I'd like to do is bring the Trails Committee onto the county's Parks and Rec. Which would make it easier for us to acquire grants and kind of be counting functioned as a Trails Committee.
Sure.
And so if you guys, if you would like to give, um, the other commissioners kind of an update on what we did as a Trails Committee and, um. Go from there, I guess.
Okay, well, I really haven't.
You don't have to wear that.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I really haven't been to a meeting in the last year, so.
Well, so, you know, COVID kind of put a handkerchief on it and so.
But I can.
Just talk about pre-COVID.
Okay, so pre-COVID.
And we're just trying to get it on its feet again, so.
Yeah, well, we were meeting pretty regularly, oh gosh, it was once a month. And, well, so Jamie and I were co-chairs and, and then Tony took over as chair, chairperson, um, last year. And we basically, we, in the beginning, we had applied for some grant money and, um, through the travel organ. And we received that money and we've taken that money and purchased, um, the trail markers. Which, is this what you want me to talk about? Okay, um, there are those blue trail markers and then, um, we had stickers designed. That were the logo for the Trails Committee and, um. We mapped that out with mileage and we figured all of that out and I, I am just a small part of this. We had a committee that did, you know, we all worked together. Um, Lisa K O was an instrumental person in developing all of this as well as, um. Tanya, um, and who else was on that committee? You and, um.
That was. Kind of drama, like.
Um, oh my gosh, Tucker, Marie.
Oh, Marie Tucker.
And, um, I don't want to forget anyone, but I know I am. And we mapped all of those out and we created, um, a brochure with those trails on them. And with mileage and suggested hiking routes as well, um. And we, what else did we do? Oh, and we also found, well, we got funds, um, as well as donations from the Vanenburg family. To put in those large signs that are by the pool and then at Days Vale Out and then up by the, the gun range. And then also, we, we also, um, were granted permission to put in signs on the forest service, correct?
And that brings up Scott Spoffel was another.
Yes, Scott, yes, Scott.
On the forest service side.
Yes, he was very instrumental as well. So, um, we had those put in and then we had, um, an opening celebration kind of to. Kick off putting all of, of the signs and then that was. June twenty nineteen?
It's a good, per twenty?
Twenty twenty is just a blur.
No, it was nineteen.
Nineteen.
It's nineteen.
Um, it all runs together at this point, so, and that was at, that was kind of when we finished everything and that was at the. The Noni Run. In that two places.
So.
And so like I know, um, Tanya's been working with this last year prior to COVID, she worked on with Paisley with some trails. And then, um, we also have been working on just keeping it up, you know, updated and clean and, and. Yeah, all the maintenance involved with that. So I know that that's been happening, but probably not lately.
So how we did it was we were under the umbrella of the Chamber. Because the Trails Committee wasn't a five oh one three C, so we couldn't get. We had to go through the Chamber to get the business organ and the other grants available. Who also bought the highway signs out here on the highway. Um, they paid for the trail markers. And on the Noni Trail from the swimming pool. We tied into the Timber Trail, which is getting a lot of publicity, which is also called the Fremont Tier or Fremont. How, what is the?
Well.
What's the name of the?
N R T.
Yeah, and then our Fremont N R T, so.
And it's O T T now, I guess.
Yeah. And so we tied in and so we have trail markers every quarter mile on the Noni Trail. And then the forest service regulations is every mile. And where we tied in up by Roger Meadows onto the trail. And so what I, I guess what I'm asking the board and the Trails Committee is if. We could take them in under Parks and Rec because part of the Parks and Rec, um, stuff is the trail, maintenance, the trail stuff. And it, I just think it would be a good. It, I just think it would be a good fit, then we get loans and get the Trails Committee rolling again. Um, one of my thoughts is, you know, building the trail from either Dave's Bailout or the Gun Range to the Ski Hill. Um. And so I'd like to get the committee going again and where we can start. Hitting some of our trails, just, um.
Was the Trails Committee not tied to anybody, just the committee?
It was tied to, I mean, it was under the, under the umbrella of the Chamber. And, but the Chamber.
Is under the umbrella of the Chamber.
So it would be easier for everybody if we could just pull it into the. The Trails Committee and get it going again and under the Parks and Rec. And so that's what I would like to do. And so, um. You know, we've talked about how, you know, the trails, not only foot and horse, but ATV and, and. Two tracks and, um, we want to be inclusive of everyone and so, um.
That was, that was kind of our main goal initially when we first started. So we actually had the ATV. Um, quite a few of those members on the committee and then we kind of divided off because it was just too big. But we definitely included everyone in there because we all use the same trails, so.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's a lot of things that, you know, the Trails Committee could work on outside, you know, going towards the north end. I mean, we have, uh, we have the old Carlin Trail, goes around the east side of Summer Lake. And goes to Paisley and a lot of the side by siders would take that back in the day and they'd go back and forth and. Uh, this last year in two thousand nineteen, they were running into some issues, um, because of the wilderness characteristics areas. And they were wanting to make sure that they could keep that open and, uh. We have sand boomers, of course, on the north end and, and they like to circle down into Paisley and. Go all the way out to out there, take that route and they'll do a circle sometimes over Shee Glith draw and come back around, but they can't drive on the highway. There's an old trail that, uh, follows the, the power lines. And, uh, then it crosses over the highway. And it goes over towards the ODFW property. And there, and the trail cuts through there, but they've since kind of shut that off and you can't use that. So you end up having to either go on the highway or you just can't go that route at all. And so there's things that we've wanted to do up there for some time and trying to keep some of those trails open. So side by siders and ATV years and hikers can use those routes and not be walking along the highway. Uh, but we haven't been able to. Um, and so there's things that we could work on and I think Parks and Rec, I was reviewing that Parks and Rec plan. There's a lot of potential.
Oh, yeah.
Of things that we could work on. And, uh, so are you looking to pull it in under the county? Um, basically instead of under the, um, Chamber, you just want it under Parks and Rec? And then you, you want to revitalize the Parks and Rec program?
Correct. And so, and this is just a step in that direction. We were also working on signs for the Timber Trail and Paisley when COVID hit. Um, Travel Oregon was going to give us that money, but they kind of hit some financial problems and so. Um, you know, that's one deal, you know, we could pull up. We want to be all inclusive of every trail person. We also want to be all inclusive of our whole county and so. Um. You know, if you're going to dream big, it'd be great on all the BLM ground where we could have an ATV trail from one end to the other. I think it'd be wonderful, right? And so, um. Just ideas. Did you want to add anything else, Melissa?
Um, no, I just think, yeah, including, you know, the north end of the county and. And I think that the idea of including Paisley in there is just perfect because. The OTT trail, I mean, they can go into Paisley without having, you know, a vehicle or a ride. They can just ride, ride in and.
Right.
And then it's just all connected.
Well, it's seen the increased business, the hot springs.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, the, the great thing about Parks and Rec and I think Commissioner Schuhlenberg and I discussed this before was. Our Parks and Rec is virtually untouched here in Lake County. And so is our recreation on public lands, which we have seventy-six percent ownership. And so it's all tied into our economic development, it's tied into recreation, it's tied in to a lot of things. And so I just want to try to revitalize that as part of our plan and, and so.
Right. I guess my only question that, you know, have, have we talked to the new Chamber Director at all?
I have not, but, um. That's part of my plan.
I think it'd be a courtesy just to.
Yeah.
Though, though, they were on, I don't know if they were just. They were on the commit, on, on the Trails Committee. Um, Jessica was and so I'll talk to Sheila and see if they want to continue as.
Yeah.
Part of the people of the committee, so.
Yeah. And it'd be interesting to see where we go with getting Parks and Rec revitalized and getting that going up. And I know you may have some more topics on that later and it'll be a, so. Okay. I don't really have any other issues. Yeah, no, no, no problems, no questions. No, this is good.
Thanks, Mark.
It's a good discussion, it really is.
Well, if she would have wanted to sit back, why am I, I could have.
Could have gotten Anna up here too.
Why Anna was here though, because she plays a big role in.
Yeah.
Part of it, so.
You don't even give us the Ski Hill up there.
I wasn't there this weekend.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know, I do know about the plans for next weekend though, so hopefully that goes through. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Good day.
That's it, that's it, no hard pressed questions, no hot seat questions?
Oh, oh, God, it's not like.
We're starting to feel for you.
I don't feel good about that.
Um, next item, uh, Anne Crumry, uh, credit card change. Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thanks. We'll see you on the Ski Hill.
See you, Mark.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, we at Lake County have used. A credit card program issued through the original South Valley Bank. And I think we converted to them, I want to say it was either two thousand seven, two thousand eight. Did not understand at the time that we were signing up for, um, a small business program that actually had personal guarantees attached as well. So recently with a lot of COVID purchases that we've had different departments need to make under quick timelines. We ran into credit limit issues and when we tried to increase credit limit, they said, nope, because it was under some personal, uh, limits. So, uh, we use US Bank as our primary, uh, institution for operational banking. And they have a credit card program that's pretty robust. So the other day Melanie and Barry and I sat in on a webinar explaining three different credit card options that they offer. And this gets us away from any personal guarantees, it's a corporate liability structure. Uh, using a corporate liability structure. Cards are issued in individuals' names, but we can also use, have a card issued in a department name as well, which is different than what we've ever used in the past. So in your packet, there are, um. Yeah. I just provided the One Card information. They, what they provide is a travel card, a purchase card and the program called One Card. The purchasing card is just that for purchases and you can block out certain types of, uh, purchases. Like you can block out using it at like a restaurant or a bar or things like that. The travel card is just for travel. Um, the One Card combines both of those programs, but then all, they offer a cash rebate. Based on purchase amounts and also on how quickly we pay our bill. So we have the potential to earn. Cash rewards on the One Card. Because we do use credit cards to purchase airfares. Melanie thinks, and I did too, and I think Barry did too, after listening to all that, the One Card makes sense for us, right? I'm going to have Jay chime in too if he would like. And then if, if, if that program is, is too much or we see use that is not in line with what we want as policies. Then maybe we back off and, and we go to a purchase card and a travel card. Um, right now. I guess what I'm asking is that we make a decision to move to the US Bank One Card. And then I will come back before you with maybe some new policy language. Right now, our credit card policy is probably non-existent. I mean, it's pretty, uh. Pretty open, um.
Can use some structure.
It can, yes, okay. So, so instead of trying to make all of those decisions at one point in time, I think there needs to be some thought into the policy. But we do need to move to a different credit card, uh, provider just to allow. Some higher limits for purchases that are occurring right now for certain departments, so. Um, do you have any questions? That's kind of a big shotgun approach.
So, I guess mine only would be, why, why would we want to have two different cards? And, I mean, to me, that seems confusing. Um, who would, who would have the cards? Um, would be another question.
So currently we have about, I think, eight to ten cardholders and they're primarily department heads. Um, in a few instances, we might have an office manager position under a department head and also have a card in their name. Right now, um, limits are anywhere from three thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars depending on the department. But the overall county credit limit is capped at twenty-nine thousand seven hundred. And that's where we ran into the issue. All of our cards individually add up to about forty-five to fifty thousand, but that twenty-nine thousand seven hundred is keeping us there. The, the reason that two cards could come into play is if we want to have such internal control policies in place. That are very restrictive on when and where cards can be used. That's, but if, if we're, if we feel like the One Card or what it says can be controlled with our own policies in place. Then we would move that way. The One Card also has quite a bit of protection if an employee uses it fraudulently. But we have to prove our policies are in place and we also have to terminate the employee. Or, you know, gross misuse. Um, agreeing to those terms allows quite a bit of protection from US Bank. And it's backed by Visa from their fraud protection plan in my view. Um, the other thing about US Bank and this credit card program is a lot of online accessibility for both. Uh, you know, administrators of the cars for paying the bills, but also individual card holders. Um, for instance, if we had each of you set up with your own card, you would be able to log into your activity, your card. You can see, you know, you can make approvals almost, you can see where it's used. There are companies now that are providing, uh, almost receipt-based detail to the credit card companies. So if you forgot to bring a receipt home, it's possible the receipt would be right there through that credit card purchase. Um, they said about forty percent of companies, there have that statistic, right? About forty percent have that. Receipt-based transaction stuff come up through the credit card. Jay, do you want to chime in on anything?
No, I think that's enough. I mean, we, there's a lot of details we're going to have to talk about still. Um, what do we do with the rewards? Are we going to break these out by GL codes? Now, but we can deal with all of that later.
The, the potential rewards are about one point eight percent, um, if we maxed out both, um. Well, using the One Card program, but also maxed out how quickly we return payments to the company, so.
So like, is there a cap on the one point eight percent?
Right now, we spend anywhere, you know, this is just rough, this is what I provided US Bank. Right now, our credit card bill monthly averages around like ten, twelve thousand. Like I said, we've had high use recently and so we've hit that higher mark, but over time, the average is.
So, so let's just, let's say we buy a hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. Wouldn't it be wiser to use the credit cards since on that, purchasing that piece of equipment? To get the one point eight percent back?
Yeah, but I really would, I don't, I would not, I would not be in favor of having a hundred thousand dollar credit limit for our county.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm just, I just use that.
Right.
Number, but I'm just saying is, instead of paying for it outright from the county. Wouldn't it be wise to use it because we get almost two percent back if we do?
Right, and so US Bank did probably a fantastic sales job, talking about all the ways that we can use this credit card to reduce costs. If you, if you put the cash back right on your bill, you know, you do that way. So they talk about a lot of companies that use it for accounts fail. You know, instead of paying sentry link every month with a check, you set up for that automatic credit card payment. And then you're just a credit card company, you reduce, you know, the cost. We're, we're not there yet, um, and again, that would be a policy discussion if that's the route we want to go or, or not, so.
So Commissioners, uh, I'm very familiar with this US Bank, it was used by my former employer. And the part that I like about it is what Anne's talking about, about the accountability. And you can, you can monitor the transactions and you can prove transactions. If you get purchases on there that you're not aware of, which I never did occur in my time. You, you certainly have that ability to work with the bank and, and, you know. Get it taken off. But it's very professional. I think that we'll have no problem as the county tracking purchases, travel and things like that. Credit limits, I think, can be negotiated with this bank. So what about like the per DM, like I'm going back to travel? Will we have to redo the per DM? Um. Because if, if you have a credit card. You don't need the per DM.
So our travel policy right now would, would be up for discussion. You know, current county practice is that people are entitled to the IRS per DM rates. Um, and using that IRS per DM program means they're not quite, um, responsible for turning in receipts. Here, here's the limit that the IRS approves, this is what we will pay you.
And, and this did, and you either spend it or you don't. And, and what's left over, you, you get to keep basically.
Right. So, and then we don't allow for credit cards to be used for those hotel accommodations. Because it's, it's paid to the employee, the employee is responsible, right?
Maybe it's only then paid to the employee. Right.
So. Uh, we can move to this program and keep that same policy in place. We can talk about that policy down the road if we would like to see something changed there. It's going to, it, it, you know, it's, it's kind of got to be one or the other. Because that's the fear is paying the credit card hotel, but also paying the employee for the hotel and he can't be in that situation. So, um.
Jay, did you have a question?
I did, just something. I have the two percent, one point eight kickback versus is there, um, I don't, I don't use a credit card. I mean, my office manager will, but is there a cash price and then a credit price? So is there, I mean, is there a difference there? Sometimes if you go gas station, it's ten cents different or some places they tack on three to three and a half percent difference if you pay with the credit card.
Well, that, yes, that's true, um, if you're paying with a credit card and businesses have the right to charge what they want for that, that purchase. The rewards program is based on the card transactions period.
Oh, period, okay.
So, they, they can't go off of anything else other than what's been charged to the card.
Now, let me answer my question, because I can see a one point eight kickback, but then the three and a half percent overcharge.
Yeah, they can.
So it's a charge of fee for using the credit card, so are we down one point seven or are we up?
Down.
Right.
Mister Perkins also said he would provide a form letter to send to the different vendors. And so we could ask what they prefer and then we could weigh out different options, like whether it'd be best to pay my account, pay a bill with a credit card or if it's best to just go ahead and give a check. So, we can figure out those different incentives if it gets down to that.
And there's, we, we have this ability too with our current credit cards, but they do, they do have the ability to block certain, um, categories of merchants. For instance, I think the one that, that comes up quite often and it's funny that this is what we talked about. But like, you know, dating websites, they can block like, they can block purchases made. There's, which I have to say, in my time here at the county, I have seen that happen.
You see.
You did, it, it was by surprise.
On the county credit card?
Yeah, they, they, and the person swore and nothing could do it, but then they're like, maybe I used a little card, sure. So there's, they blocked, they blocked certain, uh, you know, types of merchants. They, they obviously can block, I think, alcohol sales at bars, you know, they, they can block all kinds of, uh, things for credit card purchasing, so.
And in my travels, different communities, other counties, there are directors who have a credit card and they can pay for the meal with the credit card, but then ask for two separate receipts. One for beer or adult beverage receipt, they pay on their own card out of their personal pocket and they have their, their meal card, um, on the county card.
Yeah.
I think this is change, um, but it's change in the positive. And again, I really like the accountability process that this, this provides.
Well, it gives me good straight future.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's right, I was gonna say, the information that was available on their website um, was quite a lot more than the information available on our current credit card company website. Uh, right now, Nikki has to chase down people for the purchases they've made on their credit card. Now, this system, with everyone having their, you know, Nikki would have access to all of that, but then individual cardholders have access as well. So Nikki can be shooting down like, hey, here's your statement for your card, get this back to me, you know, by whatever date. And so, they, they just, a lot more accountability with all the information, so.
Yeah. Right. No, I really like this. It's a good idea. So, um, we won't be making any motion tomorrow or anything like that. This is something that'll just come out later and made.
Well, so what I would like though is permission to go ahead and make the transition to the US Bank One Card and, and fill out that application and get that rolling. As far as discussing policies, like, cause right now, we can keep all of our policies in place that we currently have. It's just a new credit card. Um, and then over time, make our policy updates for credit card usage.
Okay. All right, well, I think I can add on that tomorrow.
Okay, that's great.
Sounds good.
Let me know if you think of some other questions, cause there's, there is quite a bit to it and you might think of something more later, so just let me know.
Thank you, okay, thank you. Okay, uh, next item, I see Judy, you're here. With the, we'd like to go back on the Nineteenth Amendment, uh, OHA agreement?
Right, so it looks like they're giving us a little, um, reproductive health money back. Um, and they're taking, they took away some COVID nineteen response money. I'm looking into that, um, with Michael Newton is the new person who is doing our, um, all of our financial reporting now. She just took that over from the hospital because we've been struggling. And, um, so I'm, I'm clear and I put a call into her and she's clarifying on whether that's money that we lost and they're taking back or if it'll roll over. Um, so I don't have the answer to that yet or we're looking into that. Hopefully what will happen is that money gets rolled over and we get to use it for twenty twenty-one and that's what it's saying on there is that if you turned in a report by August twentieth, it would roll over to the new year. I don't know if that report was turned in by the hospital or not, so we're looking into what that means. Um, and, and that, those two things are the only updates on that amendment. Yeah, it's, it, it, it's painful if that, if that's true, but we'll figure it out. Um, I did have a couple other updates for you guys real quick, at least since I'm here and I never make it here. Um, we had, so we did clinics, um, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Monday for COVID vaccinations. I know we're at least at a hundred and forty to fifty people vaccinated in Northlake. Um, we have had over a thousand people in Lake County vaccinated and I know I have about seven hundred and fifty more people on the list currently that have not received it yet just with calling in to me. Um, we are going to, um, move, I think I'm gonna change how I'm doing vaccinations and I think we're gonna move to doing them every Tuesday at the hospital. Um, it works fabulous doing it out at the fairgrounds. Um, I want to be conscious about the, the cost of it. It's about three hundred maybe dollars a day when I use the fairgrounds. And I have a lot of employees, of course, the majority of the employees are hospital staff that come over and help me, so it pulls them from their jobs, um, to do that. It's been great, the community has been very supportive about it. But I think I'll do smaller clinics weekly in the street view room at the hospital. Um, the hospital will close that parking lot by the old long-term care uh, during those hours so people can park there. We'll open the door, that street view room, um, entranceway over there so that people can come in and out there. Then I have the EMS on, you know, and the, um, ER in case I need it. We haven't had any cases that I needed to do that, but I feel more comfortable. And the biggest thing is I don't have the physical space at public health to separate people for fifteen minutes after your shot. It would take forever if I had to do three people every hour because I have to separate them in my waiting room. So the hospitals have been very gracious and from now until whenever, they're giving me that room on Tuesdays to, to move forward.
Okay.
Um, so that will be very helpful. As you guys have seen, I think our cases are going up and I, I'm concerned that we'll move to possibly another level um, with this next move. I don't know, I haven't had time to pinpoint dates and count cases by the dates and I, I never know what dates we're looking at. But we are at three hundred and sixty-two total cases, which doesn't mean anything, but we do have thirty-four active cases in our county and twenty-one in the prison that they'll pull out. So we're up above fifty, that twenty-one of them are inmates that will come out of our numbers, but that still leaves thirty-four active as today.
But it's gotta be still in order.
But that's just today I counted. I don't, I think yesterday was thirty-five, um, or thirty-six. And I don't know if we hit that number once or at the very end if it's that number. I'm not sure how that works very.
So this Friday is not a new week.
Right.
Right, it'd be the following Friday.
And do they only go by that week or do they look at the two weeks?
They, they look at the two weeks prior.
And if we've had thirty-five and over during the two weeks prior?
So, so what's the cutoff for moderate? Is it thirty-five? Cause I thought it was closer to fifty.
Is it? I have to relook.
The cutoff for, well.
So fifty in two weeks?
Yeah. That's what it used to be. I don't know if they've changed.
But that's fifty new cases, not active, right?
Yeah, it'd be active cases at fifty.
Yeah, so.
Fifty, fifty active is how it used to be, but.
Why was I thinking thirty-five is when we go last?
Thirty is a warning that there's a, there's a, the number thirty and then, uh, because that, that triggered that once before, so remember we hit thirty and it was just one too many cases.
I think it's thirty-five. I think, I think it might be thir-, I think it might be thirty-five and I don't know why. Probably because I count, count, count when you guys call. Um, anyway, we're, we're, we're going, moving up again, so.
Are these serious cases? I mean, as far as, you know, I mean, they've tested positive, but we have no hospital.
Oh, yeah, we've had hospitalizations.
Well, I mean, right now, I mean, this week.
Yeah, 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 we, we, we have frequently had people in the hospital now. Uh, and we do have people, maybe three now. I'm not sure how many are in that today at our hospitals, I think, yeah.
Are any of the people, have they had the vaccine ever or are they infected or?
So, uh, that, that information is gonna be new. The state is updating their site that when we call people now, we will be able to ask, have you had a vaccine? And you can click down and say you've had the first one or the second one. And what you're looking for is, uh, fourteen days after the second one. And so fourteen days after your second one, you don't have to quarantine anymore. So, um, I don't know that that's in the state system yet. I haven't been doing the positive cases right now and been doing all the vaccines.
That's right.
So I will, I will revisit and see if that's come out yet because we should be at the point where, well, we have about seven hundred people who have had the second dose already.
Right.
So, so that information should be, be in there now.
It would be good to at least know that because I, I know several people who had side effects from the vaccine itself.
You don't test positive. If, if, if you have a vaccine, you will not test positive for COVID. If you get your blood drawn, you can have the antibodies, of course, cause that's what your body's doing, but it will not make you test positive for COVID.
Yeah, I, we need to look up the numbers again because we can't, moderate cannot be from thirty-one to thirty-five.
I, I don't, I honestly don't remember. I am so deep in the weeds in life right now.
It's gotta be the larger number.
Yeah, I, 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 we can all look at that because I know you guys are gonna be giving me a holler when the time comes. Um, and I've had the community reach out and say what, you know, I don't even remember what, what it means closing or restaurants. I don't remember what it means when we go to that level. I'll have to look it up with everybody.
So when, just real quick, go back on, I just had, just a question popped into my head. Uh, when, when we say we have thirty-five cases, uh, are they, did every single one of those people test positive or are any of those presumptive positives?
Some could be presumptive. The majority of everybody is getting tested. Um, and what we're running into now is we're running low on tests again through the hospital, so most of our testing is gonna be sent out, testing, and that can take two to seven days to get your results back if everybody's doing that. Um, and, um, so that the majority, I, I mean, if you call, I could give you specifics, but the majority of the cases are people who are testing positive. Um, the only time that we do, because we went down this road before and I know that, um, some people, um, would like to see us do more presumptives because of our lack of testing. But I've had, I've been down that road with the community and they get very mad if I put a presumptive in, so I encourage everybody who's a presumptive to get tested just because it makes my life easier. And most people do test. The only time they don't test it is an elderly and that causes a problem cause they're in their home and they have family members that test positive and they now have symptoms and you don't wanna drag them out and try to get them tested. And the other one is if they're very young, um, and they don't, parents don't want to do that to their kids if they're in a family with positive people and the, the child has a symptom, they may choose not to get tested. Uh, but the majority of people are getting tested.
Right.
Yeah.
That's interesting. And I, I wasn't aware, uh, if you'd had the vaccine that you couldn't test positive.
It's not a live vaccine, so it will not let, it, you won't test positive.
Right, but we do.
But it will show up in your blood draw and that's what we want it to do. We wanna see it um, in your blood draw, but if you go in and have a test after a vaccine, you're not gonna test positive for them.
You're saying the two-shot process is ninety-four percent effective?
They're saying ninety-something, yeah.
And the one-shot?
Um, so Johnson and Johnson, I believe, the sixties, like sixty-four, I don't know. I'd have to relook, but it's, it's, it's like in the sixties, like the blue shot. It's like a blue shot. Yeah, so that's kind of my updates. Any, any other questions for me?
None, it's done.
Okay.
How's your, uh, how are your employees' situation?
Oh, so, so Jill's leaving on Thursday, so if you guys have time and reach out, send her an email. Um, so I think she's been fifteen years with the county.
Yeah.
Um, so Jill's last day's Thursday. Hannah, um, is our new nurse who is just fabulous and she started, uh, time's a blur, maybe two weeks ago and is doing great so far. Um, and then I have another nurse who's coming on the twenty-third, um, who will be an employee. So, um, I'm so excited to have the help, but it's gonna be a struggle to try to get some, to get everybody trained. Um, but we're looking forward to having a whole team again. Yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, it's good.
It pays off.
Good, I, so that being said, I am gonna work remotely starting tomorrow till next week Tuesday. I'm gonna go stay with my ninety-nine-year-old Grammy and, and work from my computer. So if you need me, I'm still available on my phone. But days are precious and how many days does a ninety-nine-year-old get? I gotta get home. I've had both my vaccines. It's been over fourteen days. I'm gonna go.
Good for you.
Yeah, yeah, so please reach out if you need some. And I figure, so it'll probably be the change during that time maybe. So if you need me, count numbers and stuff, I can still do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to cover the ordinance sixty while, while she's here.
True. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we can jump down to that real quick.
Move back, or do I sit here?
Yeah, yeah, so it's up to you.
Oh, okay. Seat's feeling a little warm.
So the ordinance sixty, I just wanted some language put in it before I felt comfortable. And it, it allowed the county to, to shut down a business or to stop her business from operating because of health or safety issues. But it didn't give us any authority to, like.
So I don't know what it is you're talking about. I, I apologize.
Pardon me?
Sorry, I was just saying Jill's been working on this.
Yeah, Jill's been working on it.
Oh, this is Jill's environmental health you're talking about, okay?
So it's a, it's called ordinance number sixty, Lake County Licensing Program Ordinance for Environmental Health Services.
Okay.
And so what it does is it, it gives the county commissioners the authority to close a business. Like if you guys say this business needs to be closed because of this.
Yeah.
We have the authority to do that.
Right.
But in the ordinance, it didn't give us, it didn't give us the ability to reinstate a business. And so, my thought was, if, if we had the authority to close it, we need to have the authority to open. If, if you guys said it was okay or, or if we had a rogue employee and we didn't see the need to close a business, we didn't have the authority to open. And so I just added.
Okay, so I'm not, uh, so, so I'm not familiar with that program. Um, we do have Caroline who's the one who comes and does the, the, um, the restaurants um, and checks them and if they have something that is not, that doesn't meet, um, what they have to do, then she gives them a warning and she gives them a timeline, I know. And then they have a certain period of time that they can fix that. Like for instance, we had, uh, somebody's dishwasher wasn't working and they were washing by hand. You can't do that in a restaurant. So they gave them, you know, in a week, and then come back and relook at it and it needs to be up and going. If it's up and going, you're good. If you come back and it's not up and going, then, then you can have the issue. So I'm assuming what you're talking about is if they don't, um, if they don't fix whatever the problem is, then we tell them they, you take away their license? Um, I don't know what the step is then. I would assume that they would just reapply again. They'd have to have the state survey, I mean, they'd have to have our surveyor come back out and look at it.
So they could, they can come to us for an appeal and say, so they can appeal it to the county commissioners.
And that's why that ordinance is there.
And that's why the ordinance is here. And so, say they did fix it.
Right.
And.
Then we wouldn't close them.
Right, but in the ordinance itself, it didn't say that we could reopen that.
Oh, okay.
And that's all I wanted on that. And I'm sorry I'm bringing it up to you, but.
No, that's okay and I apologize that I just, I'm not, I'm not.
Jill, Jill wanted this taken care of before she left, so you wouldn't have that.
Got it, so I should've brought Jill.
Well, you can tell her we're gonna take care of it.
Okay, I will because she did say something about, um, that I'd be hearing from you guys. So, so that's the only question you're making and then we're moving forward with it. Got it. I will, I will let her know.
I'm assuming we'll move it forward tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, our only discussion there was that we weren't superseding the state.
Right.
And we found out that we would not.
Right, there's actually action consideration for this item today.
Oh, okay, so we could.
You can keep me posted.
Yeah, so.
Perfect.
And we can make action right now.
We could, thank you for speaking, yes.
It's up to you.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance sixty for the Lake County Licensing Program. I'll make a motion to accept ordinance sixty for the Lake County Licensing Program Ordinance for Environmental Health Services.
Sorry. Uh, motion's made and seconded to, uh, accept the, uh, ordinance number sixty with amendments. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, is there any further discussion?
Other than you can tell Jill it's been taken care of.
All motion carries.
Oh, so, yeah. Okay, and then once I get that, then I think she said I just ordered it on, just I'm gonna get this date. So when you have that sent in my way?
Perfect.
All right, thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Have fun with your grandma.
Oh, I'm the only one in here, yeah. That wasn't such a hot seat. Um, I will, thank you very much. And, um, uh, if you guys need anything, Ariana's the person to reach out to.
Perfect.
Um, and then, like I said, I have my phone, I'll be working a little bit, and Grandma sits up at her side of the counter and she thinks she's doing her work and I do my work and we have a great time. So, all right.
You gonna be around the rest of the day?
Yes, I'm here today.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Um, last item on our list, uh, Melanie, bus purchases.
So as you guys know probably that I applied for a grant several months ago to replace a bus. Um, I solicited two quotes from the qualified vendors in Oregon. And I've attached those bids and I reviewed the bids with the senior center. And they recommended a smaller vehicle. And so I am recommending the purchase of Ford Eldorado from Shekki in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars.
Eldorado used to be the, what's the car, the Ford version of Al Camino?
Hmm.
So is it a convertible or?
It's a smaller bus. It doesn't require a C E O with the way the passenger thing is set up, so they prefer that. I had a grant originally amended to be a smaller bus and so my grant is for a range, a size range. And so I send that to the vendors, as you probably saw, in the packet and then they return what they think is best.
It still seats twelve?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, plus, plus maybe a handicap spot.
Two.
Yeah, so.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, it's bigger than a mini bus.
It's. Yeah.
School's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's got a. And it can only be used by the seniors.
Correct. We own it, but we, they use it through our contract.
Now, the fiscal impact is seventy-seven thousand, is it? But the grant was only for sixty-five?
Correct.
Is that, is this making a difference out of the fund there?
So there's a match required.
Oh, I see.
And I have budgeted for that.
Okay, perfect.
Through S T F ones, which is applicable with S U ones.
Alrighty, sounds good. Um, any other questions? Or work on, uh, act on that tomorrow then. Sounds good. Uh, with that, I think the, we've got liaison updates and, uh, we've got to time the item at eleven on budget assumptions. I'm sure I'm just, if you wanna take a couple minutes.
So on the nuisance, um, I was kinda directed by us, our board last night, to ask the town if they would wanna partner with us in a nuisance person. Um, I attended the town meeting a week ago today and they were gonna hold a work session. Um, they all seemed to be in favor of it at the time, and so, um, I gave them all the information on, on the city of Bins ordinances and also on a pay scale for the city of Bins, which is just a draft for us, but it had all the required requirements and recommendations of skills and that, uh, job requirement. Um, and so I'm hoping that when they do have their next one, they'll get back to us. And then we'll have to have a joint meeting, um, to discuss it further and see what we're gonna do as a group. So we'll have a group between the county and the town of Wakefield to work out the details.
Sounds good.
Um, on the RARE application, um, what was that RARE person? That was on our SCOID.
Yeah, it was a SCOID.
And so, um, they have somebody, so we're going to, uh, continue to work on that application to have somebody from RARE come in and possibly work on our economic development piece for the county. And so.
Yeah, I had spoken to Nick Johnson. He said that, uh, we needed, if we needed any help from L C R I, because it is a, a RARE program. So, um, if we needed any help at all, uh, please feel free to reach out to him.
So would you want those guys to, um, when do you wanna, do you wanna work on it or do you want those guys to work on it or?
Whatever you refer, but I need to figure out what your direction is for the application, like what are your top three or five priorities? As a consensus on like the scope of the project.
Yeah.
So.
That's what I was hoping to get from you guys today.
So like, um, I think we're all focused on the economic development piece.
With the grants, um, grant program. And also park and rec, I think, just to kind of revitalize that. I don't know if that's something that can be worked in with RARE, even though it was a RARE that built it before.
So, but the main, the main part would be economic to RARE, right? And then.
And is there a part of economic development, like technical assistance for businesses or?
So I, one of my thoughts was agritourism. Because that's pretty much an untapped. And then our recreation part, because that's another one that we felt like we were.
And the reason I like the park and rec, uh, plan that's already been made by the previous RARE person is the plan's in place. So if we could possibly get this RARE position to implement one of those plans, uh, that would, I think, be a benefit to the county. And then, you know, potentially also apply for money as well.
So I, I would say the agritourism, the parks and rec, rec, and the grants are our top three, if you guys.
Yeah.
Unless you guys think of anything else.
My thought with the grant was is, let's say we pick, uh, one of those items in park and rec, uh, plan and there's potential to, to go for a grant that would help it as well, then they would also, uh, be part of that process. That would be part of their learning. We can certainly help them, but, uh, want them to be involved and actually have to do that skills. Right?
I think it's gonna be a great learning process, not only for them, but for us to, to not side of this field. So I'm really excited about what we can get. So I can have them, I can contact Nick if you like, to see what kind of help he can provide if you want me to do it.
Maybe what? Or I can ask him when I have questions or whatever your company would. I don't, I don't, I don't, it won't be funded either way.
No, I'm, what I'm just thinking is it could be a joint deal.
Okay.
And so if you, I just wanna know if you want me to contact Nate to, want support to you or you.
Whatever you prefer.
I want to be, I want to be. Copy that.
So I haven't seen anyone else for the service pens or the, uh, anniversary pens come back yet, so. We should just send a few moments or recognize you, the folks that have been here for five, ten years now. Um, we have a, uh, we have a pen for Geraldine in her, uh, sensor's office. Uh, she's. Patsy, sorry, yeah. Um, we can get to dispelling on that too, so, uh, but Geraldine's been with us for five years, uh, she's been absolutely awesome to work with. Um, I've, we've been here for several years, you know, we, we, this board hasn't had a whole lot of chance to work with her, but, um, she's been fabulous. The, uh, we also have Dave Lee, uh, who has been with the county for ten years now this quarter. And, uh, he works up on the jail. We also have Taylor Albertson. He's having his five-year anniversary this quarter as well. Um, so just wanna recognize those folks. They've, they've really done well for the county and it's been a pleasure to have them. Uh, if anyone else has anything else to say?
Just congratulatory and, uh.
Yeah.
Sub flies in here and fun.
Right. So, and we'll get those pens to them. Um, I was kinda hoping that maybe, uh, Geraldine or someone would have a chance to subfire, but, uh, no worries. The, uh, next item on our list, oh, s- sorry, go ahead.
No.
Oh, so she's shy. Okay, alrighty. Uh, next item on the list is, uh, we have budget assumptions. Uh, so, uh, and if you would like, that's, uh, our last item of today, looks like.
All right, so to start this discussion off, this is an annual process that we take so that you as the governing board can give me the budget officer some direction in building the twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Good.
These discussions, uh, don't involve the budget committee because they're American in tone and there are some goals and things like that, but the specifics are discussed during our meetings, which will be in May. So just to, um, clarify that, the official action of the budget takes place in May. So in your, uh, packet is a memo that's kind of designed to help us walk through quite a few topics that help, uh, start the budget build. And we are primarily discussing general fund here. General fund is, um, paid for primarily by property taxes and filt. So we have several departments underneath that, that require those revenue sources to function. Uh, a couple of the biggest are the jail and the sheriff. But a lot of our administrative tasks too, your budget, things like that. So these discussions, although they may touch other funds and departments, primarily we're talking about general funds. So the first, uh, assumption on your memo is what we call the unappropriate ending fund balance. What this figure represents is the dollars that we wanna have on hand June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two to start July first, twenty-twenty-two. So it's a forced savings account. Um, there are a few rules that would allow us to touch those dollars, but they're pretty, uh, extreme cases, natural disasters, things of that nature. So it, it, it just serves as the cash on hand June thirtieth that rolls over to the next fiscal year to be available until property taxes come in in November. We have used a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar target in budget amount for several years. That, that has served us well, but my comment routinely is as our fixed costs continue to rise with increased salaries, increased benefits and, and then, you know, things like that, and kind of flat revenues, this figure, it seems to be low at times. So this year, our low cash balance during the month of October was a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which sitting in my chair made me really nervous. Um, you guys don't see all of those dollars like I do, but that since I think is the lowest I've seen. And it's because even though we planned a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar beginning fund, or that unappropriate ending fund balance, we rolled over quite a bit more. That's just how much money we spend without the revenues to support it until taxes come in. So the reason it's hard to increase this is there's so many other decisions to make when we're doing the budget. So, you know, i- if we increase this, that means we have, wha- wha- whatever that number is, we have that much less to spend somewhere else. And so, um, we can come back to it or we can make a number now.
Do we have an ant- anticipated June thirtieth, twenty-one number?
Yeah, actually, right now, that June thirtieth, uh, number is looking pretty good. It's about one-point-nine million. We're actually seeing it go up a little bit compared to what we came, started the year with. Uh, there's several factors that are rolling that number up for us. Uh, one is increased, uh, solar, uh, taxes that we received. Another one is the charter reserve communications, sorry, charter communications reserve settlement that the state just finally agreed to last fall. We literally had almost ten years' worth of back taxes that were involved in that lawsuit. So they're hanging out there in limbo land and now we got to collect on that and distribute to all the taxing districts. Our share of that was about a hundred-and-fifty thousand. So that's a one-time shot. It's a one-time shot. They increased, uh, property taxes and solar, it will be ongoing, but that charter communications is a one-time shot. We've also had less expenditures. Uh, while, while we had more COVID-related expenditures, those were covered by COVID dollars. That's another part of the, the revenue being higher. Um, but we had less travel.
So I know, I know the charter deals are one-time, one-hundred-and-fifty thousand. But now do they have to pay every year four, whatever there is?
Yeah, but they're, yeah.
And so do you know what that is?
Well, the, so I think the twenty-twenty tax bill was in the neighborhood of ninety-three, ninety-four thousand. General fund's tax percentage of that is about twenty-seven percent, so, um, you know, roughly twenty-five, yeah, twenty-four thousand. So in our, in our tax bill of three-point, you know, five million. So, um, that's, that again is a forced savings account. Contingency, um, is also a savings account in a way, and contingency is more flexible in nature. It can, through a resolution process by the governing board, be moved into appropriation category. So it, it can be moved into, um, salaries. It can be moved into materials and services. It can be moved into capital. But there's gotta be a formal process to make that occur. Um, if transfers exceed fifteen percent of the overall appropriations in general fund, we wouldn't, it would require a separate process, a little bit more public notification on that. Our target for the past several years has been two-hundred-thousand dollars in contingency and that actually has worked really well. I think we have more trust with departments now, um, that, eh, when there's a need for them and they budget it, that will help them with that. Um, and I think it's a little bit more known, you know, we, we have more accurate budgeting now. So we have not had to go to contingency as much as we have in the past. I mean, every, every year there's something. There's always some unforeseen circumstances that come up. Um, or even opportunities that we can take advantage of, so we use contingency. So I, I wouldn't recommend, um, anything above the two-hundred thousand. As you know, sometimes in that budget build process, that number gets squeezed. Sometimes that's the first place I can go to make sure the budget is balanced. So it either goes up or down.
Yeah, we, we, I remember last, we, we had a harder time getting to the two-hundred thousand.
Yeah.
We had a very hard time.
Yeah. And so a- along those lines, right now, uh, the budget projection that I provided you puts general fund in a little bit of a surplus position. Uh, right now, the predicted revenues for the next fiscal year for twenty-one, twenty-two, um, less predicted materials and services and salaries, even with the increases, there's a surplus in general fund. But I am not taking into account several things. That, that projected surplus keeps transfers to other funds status quo. It keeps materials and services. It keeps materials and services status quo. It doesn't increase, like, there's, there's no additional support, whether it's the railroad, the fairgrounds, positions, any, anything of that nature. So, just that it's in your, your documentation there. But right now, general fund would show, you know, a little bit of a surplus for next fiscal year, if my assumptions are kind of true.
So, going back to the ending fund balance, uh, of course, it, I, I can totally understand how it would make us nervous going down to a hundred and ninety thousand. But where, what are the projections now, are we going to be able to be at that nine-hundred thousand?
Yeah, I mean, the, the actual number is higher than that. Um, but like I'm saying, general fund cost less income for July to September in twenty-twenty was one point three million dollars. So even if we're budgeting nine-hundred thousand and, and we come in higher than that, we're gonna spend that much more money than what we take in for that time period.
Right.
And so it puts a big crush on that cash that's available.
So, I'm wondering if we should increase the ending fund balance?
I'd like to see, um, there are other counties that by policy set this as a percentage of their fund. Um, you know, and sometimes they look at, like, you know, if one month is equal to eight point six percent of your operating year, like, they'll set aside like two or three months there.
Right.
Um, nine-hundred thousand's about ten percent of our budget, so it'd be about one month. So I'd like to see it go higher, I'd like to see, I can, nine-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand even. But it's, takes it from someone else.
What would you think if it was a straight million?
I, that'd be fantastic. And I, it's possible we would be able to balance this year's budget. We also have a little bit of a, we're in a little bit of a surplus position right now in projections. A lot of information's still over to calculate. But I would, I would, I would be in support of it if we can balance budget.
I wonder, we should go higher than something. But you can even really, jumping up a hundred grand is, is not necessarily a small thing.
No, a hundred, sometimes a hundred thousand in our budget's very difficult to find.
And then it's hard to get, but to get contingency to, uh, two-hundred thousand.
Barry, do you have a top of your head on the school districts? Ending fund balance?
Uh, it's, they try to end at around a million, but they've been anywhere from one point one to one point five.
Yeah. So I was kinda wondering about that. More better than school district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I can, I can have, so let's do this, for, let's start at a target.
I mean, I would, I would go for one million right now.
Okay, and then at the end of this discussion, we'll kind of lay out the priorities, like, where, if I'm having troubles balancing, where I go first to, to get general fund imbalance? Um, contingency, do we have a, a number you're comfortable with there?
I'd say the two-hundred thousand.
Yeah, two-hundred thousand for now.
Okay.
It would be nice to have a, a larger contingency, but we just, at, at this early stage, I just don't think it would be wise to start muddying the water too much here.
Okay, we'll start, and like I said, that two-hundred thousand seems to exert as well. So salaries, um, this is the one topic that affects countywide. You know, so at this point in time, we're not just talking general fund here. So we are in contracts with both the courthouse union and the sheriff's union. Our practice has been to treat everyone as similar as possible. So currently, the courthouse union contract allows for a cost of living adjustment, which follows the CPI of March. Um, that cost of living adjustment is between one point five percent and three percent plus a one per, plus a one percent, that was the negotiated contract last year. Currently, uh, December twenty-twenty CPI was one point four. Um, the projections that I used in your documentation, I did a two point five. So I did the, the bottom one point five plus the one percent to do it at two point five percent across the board. So, uh, you can ask me to project, you know, obviously it can't be lower than one point five. It can't be lower than the two point five I plugged in.
Right.
You can, you can ask us to project salaries at something higher than that.
Jay, what are your thoughts on it?
Well, January CPI should be out this week, that would help to know that.
Right.
Um, I, I could see this going as high as two percent by March, we're still two months away from that. Three months, not including January.
I think it would be wise to at least project three percent total.
Okay, so a two percent CPI plus the.
That's only half a percent change.
Yeah, right, plus the one percent contract.
Yeah, but. Or at least, at least project that.
Okay.
At least then we'll be at our max, the three percent.
No, but.
No, that is not our max, yeah.
That's four percent.
The max, that's the two percent.
Yeah, it's just kind of a happy medium, that's all I was shooting for, but, I mean, uh, I say happy medium, happy would probably be one point five.
Three and a quarter, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh. The, yeah, the sheriff's union, um, gets the CPI increase, but not the additional one percent.
Right.
Yeah.
We provided that additional contract all-in-along sum last spring.
Right.
So, they, um, just got there a little quicker. As part of salaries, I also used a two-and-a-half percent health insurance increase. Um, I believe Jay will get some figures on what.
Next week.
So, I will be able to build the budget with accurate figures, um, off of that. Meaning, he has my street view, just for these purposes and that projection, I use a two-and-a-half percent health insurance increase.
So this is based on all the incurred employees, that's not counting yet, we wanted to create another position.
Yeah.
And so, I guess my question to all of us would be, you know, I really want a grant person. And so I was talking this morning and I guess my question would be to Jay on this part of it would be, is there a way, instead of hiring a position, a whole new position for that? Can we, like, if Anne or, or Melanie or Nikki or whoever gets grants, an approved grant for somebody, can't we pay them from that? And it, it would almost be like an incentive on grants without having to create a whole new position. I'm just trying to think out of the.
Normally with a grant, there is some administrative fees you can include. Either the county can transfer that to that person, maybe? Or you would probably pay them separate from the grant because those grant dollars will be earmarked for like a certain cause. But you guys could have some sort of statement based on that, maybe?
You're, it's a li- it's a little bit.
It didn't mark me.
Yeah.
It is, yes.
If it was a reoccurring grant, you know, you could technically budget someone's salary portionally out of that, but.
Uh, and a lot of times, your notice to receive starts, what expenses you can incur.
It's hard to handle, huh? Right, and I mean, like, then, we have certain, we do.
You're talking about grant writing that can be two years before the grant comes through. And the grant cannot go back in time and pay that. It can only go from the award date, future.
So, so what, I'm just using the grant writer as an example, but, so how can we? I just believe we miss out on so much, and how can we?
So you, are you looking to incentivize already existing employees to?
I think that would be the cheapest way for the county cost, but you know, I, I'm gonna use Anna as an example. You know, that's one of her bonus skills. I mean, it's not what she's really paid to do. But if we can, and I'm just thinking out loud, if we can have Anne do her job and give us grants where we, if she needed a part-time, because you used to have a part-time employee, and pay a part-time employee to help her on the treasurer's side and she focuses more of her time and gets paid for it on the grant side. And so I'm just trying to save, having to pay another person for not only wages but for benefits and perks and.
Yeah, this is a really complicated discussion that would have to take place outside of here, you know? Jake spends a lot of hours every year writing grants. Um, we have other people that do that kind of work too, and, you know, you're kind of opening up a.
I, I understand, I'm just trying to talk this out.
So, but. You bet, there's, there's. There's administrative, there's administrative costs that you could budget for in grants as well, so. Um, I mean, our federal grant, I think, is, is thirteen thousand dollars for three years. Not thirteen thousand dollars a year, but thirteen thousand dollars over the course of three years. Some of my state grants are near between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars for two years. So there's some money there for the administrative costs that could go to that person, that position to help offset the county cost. Uh, because I, I'm, I'm almost certain for every grant, there's administrative costs you could recoup. So if there was a position, there, there's some money.
So, so, so my thought is, is, so, you're very skilled at grant, right? Compared to a lot of people, and Anne's very skilled, but not for grants. The problem is, is that when we hire somebody, it's for your skill, it's, it's, it's for, because you're a P and P guy, not because you know how to do your grant writing. And I'm just gonna use the sheriff's office for example. I think what happens is, is that if I was to write a grant, right off the bat, I would feel weighing over my head and, you know, that alone keeps you from seeking grants. Like, what I was thinking is on the sheriff's office, you know, they got grants, all kinds of grants for them, for materials or vests or equipment, blah, 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 but I don't think that the sheriff's office is, has somebody there that doesn't feel overwhelmed by writing a grant. And so we miss out on that one. And just because you and Anne and Melanie are good at it, doesn't mean all of our other supervisors are good at it. Including, I don't think any of our commissioners would know where to start.
So I think this even goes into a little bit bigger discussion on what all services we can all provide to other funds and departments in our organization. I have offered a lot of services to the sheriff's department, whether it be our grant reporting or grant writing. I think Melanie did too, for, uh, equipment and IT stuff. They can use our services right now, but it's available to them. I think what happens is, uh, the knowledge of the grant comes in late and then it's kind of a last minute, we gotta throw something together and sometimes maybe there's not time to do that. So the information on the grant that needs to come through more quickly, the sheriff's association or the state actually probably has a lot of resources that way for the sheriff's office. Um, I do have that grants database that's available too, but those are national and foundational and, and then some things that way. The other thing is too, is being a little bit more clear on what the needs and priorities are. There aren't many grants for operations. And a lot of the stuff we do is day-to-day operations. If it's well-known, and in fact, we, we talked about it for years, about the repeaters. And then this last year, we went ahead and said, okay, we're just gonna buy the repeaters.
Right.
We were told for years that Homeland Security had dollars available. We researched that, there probably was dollars available and the sheriff's office chose just to pay for them, even looking at grant dollars. But it was because, you know, shotgun effect, we're trying to do all of these things and there wasn't a specific priority. So, you know, the sheriff's office has a lot of different priorities they're trying to accomplish. Like, one of them was just staffing, so they did the school resource officer grant. Okay, so they have, they have that.
But I think the show from the town of Lakeview actually did help. But this is what I mean, I mean, and I don't know, I'm not saying I have the answers, but I'm saying, we need to focus in more and figure out a way where we can help one another out on these grants, because we're missing out on, on.
I like, I like where you were going earlier though, you know? Taking duties, lightening the load for people who have the, the ability to, to do that. Whether it's taking some duties away from the fairgrounds manager so she can write grants. Um, you know, that's, that's all really doable. There's a lot of people here that can, can do that kind of work.
I think you're focusing more on having someone though that is constantly researching, constantly looking for, finding those and submitting what needs submitted, whether it means communicating with the department head saying, I found this grant, let, let's get this, this is what I need and I'll, I'll do all this stuff to get it done. You're thinking that person doing that countywide, not just an individual from the fairgrounds or the sheriff or, but one person that all they're doing is constantly looking for grant dollars. I think your best approach is to fund that, if that's what your desire is. And then you can backfill it with administrative fees from grants that are received. But I don't think you could stipulate that, you know, you're not gonna rece- receive anything because I've, I've written grants for myself personally, it is a ton of work and there's no guarantee you're gonna get it.
Yep.
That's the biggest thing. But if you have someone that's out there, there's so many places to look for them and, um, you know, if that's what they're doing, then there's people that, the, the library gets all their money because they hired a grant person out of, I think she's in Portland. That's all she does for a living, for multiple companies and, and, uh, government agencies, is look for grants, and write grants. So, I mean, it's possible.
Well, Commissioner, you bring up grants. We see a position, any position, uh, we see we need to, uh, increase, you know, within county. You know, you're talking about that ability too.
Yeah, and so like, you know, we've talked about partnering with the, the city, Town of Lakeview on a nuisance office, which were way overdue. The grant right here were way overdue. And then, the problem that keeps coming up is our OEM person. I mean, by law, we're to have an OEM person, but since it's under the sheriff's office, that person can't, I don't feel, can't answer to the commissioners because he's an employee of the sheriff and if he's doing deputy duties, you know? And so, we've, we've had a flood, we've had COVID, we've had fires. And that's just since I've been on as commissioner. And it's, if we have, Tony and I went and ha- had, well, I got groceries yesterday. Firstly, no vegetables in Safeway, uh, like to the point where.
Perfect fresh.
Anything, because.
No frozen ones?
Because.
They had no truck.
The trucks from Portland can't get here.
Oh, yeah.
And, and so Safeway was eerily empty yesterday. And I got a email from Homeland Security a couple of weeks ago about threats on our communications and our electrical grid for terrorism, shutting down our electricity. Could you imagine if they shut off our electricity somehow in the county during the winter time? The people could die. It's not something I take very lightly. And so, I'm totally riding with Trelle and I apologize.
It's okay.
But, the problem is, is that we need that position separated from the sheriff's. But the problem is, is that we need that position separated from the sheriff's office. Without leaving the sheriff's office without a deputy. And so. There, those are the three main things that we need to figure out how we can pay them. And. We talk about it, but we have to do something. I mean, we're losing millions of dollars, I believe, on not having a grant person. We're putting our community in jeopardy by not having a full-time O E M person. Our community looks like crap because we don't have a nuisance person and, sorry.
One more position that's been talked about for years, that's still being talked about, is the G I S position. And and it's going to come up.
The G I S. Yeah. And see, we've been kind of working on that a little bit. We've did a test, that's where the our account guy. We've been helping us out with some of the G I S stuff and.
Yeah.
We're updating a bunch of maps and everything else, and I've already been able to utilize that. A lot of information that I didn't have access to as a commissioner is now accessible to the public. And um so, but yeah.
And so I guess I'm I'm, it's more of a cry for help on how can we fix this problem and. Well, um, well, hope is a plan, so hope is not a plan.
I think that you could incorporate a lot of those um grant duties and community duties and um. Your even your nuisance with the back, going back to the economic development person. Because those are all things that relate back to the economic health of your community. And you can structure it around that, and there's grants for that economic development situation. And it encompasses all of those things.
Good input. So how can we help you, Anne?
Well, so I'm just gonna say on on the topic of new positions, our budget committee has repeatedly asked. That new positions not be discussed during our meetings. So they.
Budget meeting.
During the budget meeting itself, like they want to see that information decided upon before it gets to them.
Yeah, they.
So if you want a position built in, you do it before it gets to them. They don't want to sit around and have to debate. Whether you guys think the position is valid or not.
Right.
So.
And that's why I brought it up now.
Yep, and so I would say, um, you guys, if if these positions, new positions. Are, you know, you prioritize them and want to start building them in the budget, let's get there sooner than later.
Can we say, uh, can you please budget for one new position and we'll determine what that position is?
Yeah.
And then if we can't afford it later, then we have to cut it.
Okay.
Yeah, is that fair? So we're not saying it's gonna be a grant writer, we're not saying it's gonna be a G I S or an O E M. Do you have an idea about that flexibility later?
Right. Do you have an idea of what that position might cost?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna average us a forty thousand dollars a year as the vendor's hospital. So it's kind of that being around.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna plug in.
You're right up.
Okay.
Right, what was it?
I would say we need a budget in for a hundred grand, because.
Okay.
That's firstly where everybody's gonna be, you know.
Mark, do you know with the payback, with the hospital calculates their payback on that grant writing position?
And so I know that as of last year, a year ago. Um, Kristi Albertson had got five point six million dollars from the hospital in grants. So that was a year ago. And so I might be off a hundred or two hundred grand, but it was right in there. And so.
I've read.
Pretty good return on investment there, Harvey?
I think out of that four hundred fifty thousand was our Bureau of Justice grant, because she helped us with that as well.
But remember, a lot of those dollars go to individual projects. A small portion of that goes to the actual admin costs that come back billed into the funding position, which are like.
So when you look at all of their new construction.
Absolutely.
A lot of that.
And and those, that all does contribute to the local economy, though, those are dollars that are spent in our community.
I got five point six million for the fifteen.
Yeah, look at what ended. But that's why I'm saying, if we could fill that position with somebody that's already here. And pay a stipend, the county is so much further ahead. And, you know, it's just a matter of discussing how much time you could put in. Do we need to hire a part-time employee? And that, my my thought is, that would be way cheaper than hiring a full-time grant writer. Is that we have a combined group inside our organization. And I'm not knocking Jake by any means, because you do a great job getting him. But what I'm saying is, is that we hired you on as a P and P guy. You know, and then, yeah, go ahead and get the grants, but. I'm gonna go back to the sheriff's office. We can't pay for personnel. But if we can reduce their materials and services by getting grants hundreds of thousands. That could be added on on the end. And so I guess I'm gonna be where I'm looking. So. But we we just need to figure something out. I need to talk to all of you guys individually and what your ideas might be and what we need to get there.
So right at this point in time, what I'm gonna do for purposes of this discussion. I'm gonna um project salaries at three percent, I'm gonna plug in a physician, we want it to be at a hundred thousand.
I would say so, just to progress.
Okay, and then that's where we'll leave the budget build until things firm up.
Okay.
Okay, materials and services, um, our practice over the last couple of years has been just a copy over from one year to the next. Materials and services, I think uh that's realistic and reasonable. And then people adjust um up or down based on what their needs are and what their knowledge is. Um, just to give a little history on that, about three years ago, during a a budget balancing period. I did have to go through materials and services um throughout general fund. And get it back in line with a little bit more historical, actual expenditures. Because I I call like budget creep happens. When when you're just copying year to year and you're never really looking at what's actually spent. Um, that number can get a little bit skewed. And so it was nice to get it back in line with what's actually spent with a little bit of wiggle room for people and then move from there, so. I think that's still served us well. Okay, we also need to discuss specific reserves. Budget law requires that uh once reserves are established, that you every ten years. Uh, reevaluate the need for the reserve. And I use both this discussion and our budget meetings to meet that requirement. So not only are we not letting them go for ten years, we discuss them every year. Uh, the first one is our facilities reserve. Our um set aside this fiscal year was a hundred thousand. These dollars can be used countywide, however. For most recent times, we've used them more primarily for this building itself, whether it was the elevator, the roof, uh windows, things like that. When you budget it as a as a reserve, though, you're telling the public that's a savings account, we will not touch it for this fiscal year. So the idea is sometimes you're saving for a future expenditure there, so.
Um, do we roll over at the end of the year, basically, so it just.
Yes. Yep. So if if, basically, what what you would say almost is if we plug in a hundred thousand there, it's not taking anything more out of our budget. It's just maintaining that, and so it's that hundred thousand is what the number is right now.
And that's pretty historical.
Yeah, we've seen it at a hundred and fifty thousand, um, we've seen it move a little bit, but.
Possibly for years that they knew there were going to be some projects or.
Yeah.
You can see that that's what always kind of confused me about it, is that when we we knew there was going to be projects. Putting money into the reserves, which we're basically telling the public, we're not going to spend those dollars this next fiscal year. But in reality, we're planning on it.
So uh.
Potentially.
Depends on the nature of the reserve, we're gonna, there's another one that we, like the communication reserve. And the technology reserve helping out that instead.
Oh, okay.
The technology reserve, we actually put money into it and then we pulled it out when we did our software upgrade. So now that's kind of backed down. And 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 that's how we should see it, the reserve goes down, helps offset the actual capital purchase or materials, services, whatever it is. And then you build that reserve back up again for the future expenditure.
Okay.
So.
Questions?
Yeah, sure. So Anne, when I was listening in on the uh budget discussions uh last spring and summer. Uh, we talked about COVID being an impact on our future budgets. Due to uh tax dollars, whether it be motel tax, uh gas tax, different things not coming in. Because of people not traveling and et cetera, et cetera. Less revenues coming in the county. Do you anticipate, I mean, how how have we since looked at that since about six months or better ago?
Well, so, to be honest, our property taxes came in even higher for this time of year than what we anticipated. So we didn't see a COVID impact on our property taxes. Um, the gas taxes that we really discussed during the budget meeting. Um, although they, we took a dip in the first few, like, starting months of COVID, they've kind of come back up. Um, motel tax, we are seeing a little bit of decline there. What keeps that status quo or closer to status quo is our construction going on here. Uh, motel tax plays a small part of general fund. Um, gas tax is a big part of the road fund. Property taxes is what could have impacted general fund the most, and we we did better um than what we would have. What I would have anticipated from the COVID impact. As far as state funding, because of their income. It's very interesting to look at the state revenue forecast um that they published in December. Their income, taxes and collections and receipts have been higher than they anticipated. Primarily, that's because of the federal support that's propping it up. And also high wage earners weren't impacted. So it was, so it's kind of interesting. You know, we're we're waiting for those state budget cuts and I think we're gonna, we see some, Jake's not anymore. I think we're seeing it in some departments, I think veteran services is going to see um a cut. I think, you know, community corrections is, I mean, obviously, if the prison closes. Then we have some impacts on our property values and our property taxes and things like that here. Um, but right now, the COVID impacts to our collections, our revenues haven't been as great as we can anticipate. And then.
What about water?
Water, lottery can break back, because remember, you can go in and you can play the Lotto, you just can't buy a drink and sit there. But you can go sit at a machine.
Yeah.
You literally can go sit in a machine, but you cannot buy food or drink.
That doesn't forbid you make money, but don't try and stop the government from making money.
Right, right, so lottery, they, the state understands where their bread is buttered and they're gonna keep the lottery going.
Yes.
Yeah, that, I mean, we we have seen.
So I'm just trying to get a good picture for two, three years down the road. Are we gonna, are we gonna see? And maybe with this current administration, we're not gonna see it, because they'll stand it up.
Yeah, you know, there's so many things that can happen locally that that impact what we see in our property values or property taxes. Um, you know, if we have a significant population move out.
Sure.
You know, then we see people foreclose on their homes, we we see, you know, taxes go down that way. But um. We're, you know, with Red Rock coming online, we're gonna see community service food that comes in for us in lieu of taxes. Based on that strategic investment program that they signed off on. Um, not that that would offset significant declines and foreclosures or people moving out, but. You know, there's gonna be ebbs and flows on our.
Yeah, as you made, we went and signed papers on, we refinanced. And one of the realtors here was the lottery. And. They said, they said that they had a customer. Put their house up for sale, they sold it one day. And that person was a Red Rock employee, a prison employee, sold their house and the Red Rock employee bought it the day. And she was thinking that a lot of the Red Rock people that don't have homes yet. Will buy the homes of. Possible closure of the prison. And so. We might see a huge deal or we might not see quite as bad. I know that the housing market is terrible before the prison thing. I mean, as far as buying a house, it took a lot to find it, so. I don't know, maybe we won't see a percentage anyway.
Yeah, it might, just history shows that Lake County, it's almost like. In a little bit of bubble in the housing market, things that really affect land or, you know, other places don't affect us quite as much. Because our our supply is a different limit there, you know, um.
Kind of in our own focus.
Yeah, so we don't have quite the highs and we don't have quite the lows, we stay a little bit more steady, just.
Um. Thanks, Anne. Going back to this real quick, I wanted to, I did a a quick question, just going back to salaries really quick. Um, the sheriff union's contract, they they receive the increase on the COLA. But is that going to be the one point five, or is there there a rate on the COLA that the that is being predicted at? But they just won't receive the one? And if they do receive the COLA, will they receive the same COLA that the other employees receive?
That COLA is based on the C P I. Whatever the C P I is, if it's two percent, they'll get two percent, if it's one and a half percent, they get one and a half percent.
Same as everyone across the board.
Same as everyone else, but they've already got their three percent last year. The other employees, the courthouse unit and other employees got one percent last year, so they're projected to get one percent this year.
So they. Okay.
They will get the one percent additional, the sheriff's unit will.
Yeah, the sheriff's union won't get that one percent additional.
But everyone will get that COLA.
Yep. Okay, moving on to under the Fair Board, uh roping club facilities, that's uh.
Yeah, this is a really, really, really old donation made. Um, in hopes that one day we would have an indoor facility, an arena. Um, so we carry it on the books in in hope that if, you know, obviously, it'd be just a small piece of a new facility out there to help.
So we keep adding this amount every year?
It's, that's just the amount that we carry year to year. That's the original donation from.
Adamant, let it not be.
Can't lose for anything else.
Let it not be, not leave and not be used for anything else, that's what it's for. The people that started it.
Let's not do this.
Right.
It's just an odd number. I mean, just make the donation until.
I I I think people donate it with the hopes that the county would do their part.
And match it or something, or is there anything?
Or actually construct something that could benefit everybody and be indoor.
Oh, sure.
What's the amount?
Four thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars. And I, it literally goes back to a donation made, I would say, like in nineteen ninety-one.
Yeah, that was way, very long before me, so.
Great, so we've got other ideas, you know, and I think we could put our money in other things close to the fairgrounds. Don't you think?
Yeah, it's uh, we've, we've been making a lot bigger contributions than that.
Yeah.
During COVID, um.
Yeah.
Some are arguable, uh, but, um.
Didn't we have a discussion with the people, though, that headed that up and they were quite adamant that I was not. I know Bob Born was part of that discussion.
Well, it's not, no.
There's, yeah, there's no question that it won't stay there, I think the question would should be increasing. Um, is where I would, yeah, but I think there's other ideas for what may happen at the fairgrounds. Sooner than later, and so there's other dollars that may go somewhere else.
Cool.
But this would stay here until.
Yeah, it's it's not effective at the current forty-six hundred, no.
No.
So, you know. It's not gonna get you anything, but yeah, we we should either decide.
Maybe the grant writer could come up with something.
I'm sure you could, I bet someone could find a voting.
Can we at least add the interest it occurs? I know that's not much, but if we could use the great. I know that's not much, but if we could use the pool rate at the beginning of July and apply that small amount of interest, it might help.
I think we need to add more money to that myself, but.
What if we changed this to ten thousand?
Yeah, I'd say that's.
Would you guys be there?
Some more believable number, I mean, it makes more sense than.
Plus interest?
Four to six hundred dollars, yeah.
The interest actually would be a budget figure every year.
Yeah.
Because the line item itself, I can't add to it.
Yeah.
Um, so every year what you can see instead of ten thousand dollars like the following year, you would see that point zero two percent interest go on it. So it'd be ten thousand two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
But for the first year, we can have a target of ten thousand dollars and.
Okay.
The onsite program reserve, this is actually a DQ requirement, so there's really not a whole lot of discussion here. It's just again to point out um why we have reserves and their purposes. This one has to do with the septic program. And because we handle that program ourselves instead of DQ, we're required to set aside dollars in case the state has to take it back. So if we didn't administer that program, we go okay, DQ. We need you to administer it, here's ten thousand dollars to get going. So, um, it's just, that's just what it is basically. It's a DQ department. The technology upgrade at twenty-five thousand, that this is what we're, I was talking about, I think before we'd seen this either fifty. I can't remember what the total was, but we reduced it to twenty-five thousand because we expended some of those dollars for our financial software system upgrade, so. Um, I'm sure Mel might have some ideas of down the road, what some big technology purchases may be. That we need to set dollars aside for, I don't know what that, but. So I don't know if we wanna keep it at twenty-five thousand or or save up for something else in the future.
Twenty-five is a good number, I think so. Gives you some options. Let's talk about the communication reserves.
So this appears in fund one oh five and this was the set aside um. For, you know, we were told a couple of different things, but it was either repeaters, um, what was, it was repeaters. We are replacing three on top of years this year.
Right.
Okay, that reserve. Uh, we didn't, we didn't take any out of that reserve. We actually funded it straight up from contributions from general fund, from Title III. And from the town of Lakeview's budget to fund the replacement of those repeaters. So these reserve dollars were protected for down the road communications issues. Um.
The problem is, is that ten thousand dollars doesn't really cover much.
Right.
So I'm wondering if we should move that to twenty-five thousand also.
My original understanding of this when I first came on was that there was ten thousand dollars being put into a fund every year. And that fund has grown and then eventually we would be replacing those repeaters.
Well, I think there was a couple of things.
It's now a misconception on that.
Well, there's just a couple of things, I mean, because all of that's kind of truth. Um, actually, the sheriff's department funds the communication fund to the tune of twenty thousand a year. If they don't spend those dollars based on needs and and equipment replacement, because they even use these dollars for vehicle radios. Or their handheld radios, or things like that, or um the boosters in the pickups or whatever. So if the need wasn't there, they didn't expend it, then it increased that reserve balance. Okay, so, so a little bit of that, that was occurring and every year they do budget twenty thousand dollars to this, this function for video communications.
That's a material supply, but they've just separated it out a little further.
Yeah, they, they, they did have a need to, you know, the, the worry is. Cause there's something about the repeaters that are getting outdated, maybe um, so the worry was something could happen to a repeater and we'd be.
I support the twenty-five.
For communications? Okay.
I mean, because if a repeater goes down, ten thousand dollars.
No, no, ten thousand five hundred is not going to pay for a new repeater.
Okay, so I'll try twenty-five thousand as a target and we'll just.
Yeah, we'll see.
The fleet reserve, actually, this um used to be thirty-five thousand, we reduced it thirty thousand to thirty thousand last year to help balance some budget things. This is dollars set aside, this is an interesting one. These are dollars set aside to replace a vehicle in the event that. A vehicle goes out of commission due to a wreck or or something else severe. And we can't um handle the replacement of that during the, the, the rotation of vehicle purchases. Being in a reserve of tighter pants, because if you're saying it's a reserve, you're telling the public, we're not spending those dollars. But in the significant event that we had to tap those, we would do a supplemental budget process, allow the publics to comment. And then buy or replace them. So it did, it is a savings account for that unknown, it's just not readily available.
So previous uh vehicles that have been wrecked, we use this account and was this supplies?
We, we haven't used this.
So we have a line item for damage.
Yeah.
Um, we can use that, I think we've used this maybe once when we have, but.
So, so the vehicle that got, that hit the elk.
That was out of a different um liability line item, means repair liability or whatever it's called. Because that was eleven thousand dollars. I could absorb that, I think I budgeted fifteen thousand or something like that.
We didn't have to replace it, we didn't have to purchase a new vehicle.
We didn't replace, if we would have, we would have had to tap into this, if it was totaled.
So do you think this is not fair?
Well, what's interesting too is when you're talking the sheriff rig, there a thousand wasn't covered. I mean, the sheriff rig.
You're double twice that, yeah.
Yeah, at least, if not more.
Yeah, because the sheriff rigs, with everything fitted in, we're talking on the door of a hundred and twenty-five thousand with everything in it.
But we can, we don't, like, we've never used this ever. Um, even when we have had damage and different things like that, we haven't necessarily replaced the rig, we've repaired it or something like that.
Or we bumped up, okay, we've gotta use purchase dollars.
Yeah.
So we've changed the rotation of when we're gonna purchase replacement vehicles.
Right.
So, you know, we budget to replace probably three vehicles a year on average.
Two, 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 two.
So if something happened, we just said, okay, if we're gonna, we have to replace the sheriff rig.
Right.
Somebody else kind of goes to the next year on when.
So there's um. The question for me isn't, it, it's, it's not solely whether or not this is high enough, because obviously it's nothing to replace any rig.
Yeah.
Um, question is whether or not it's needed at all.
Right.
Well, I think the intent behind it is that, so say I made all the purchases for the year, it's end of the year and then we're. In a little bit of a gap before we have the next physical year. I think it's just.
We get into a multiple wreck.
Or, yeah, but like this year I've already made the purchases and then we get in a wreck, we need the vehicle, we don't have any extras. Because we're vehicle poor, then where does the money come from? But you know, we have, it could come from contingency or.
But then you. But then you have insurance.
No, we're self insured.
We're self insured.
Yeah. I just.
We, we have insurance for liability, but not collision.
I always look to see how many rigs we got out there.
Right, we, we have.
Yeah.
I guess I'd be, uh, I'd consider, let's just leave this one play and keep it at thirty. Be my recommendation.
Would you?
Yeah, well, for now, we can leave it here. I mean, we're just going through it, you know, just kind of assumptions right now, but um. I'm fine with leaving it where it is and kind of seeing where we, we end up at. We've increased the number of our reserves today. They haven't decreased anything, so kind of moving forward, uh, seeing where we come out at. Um, I'd be curious, let's see, it is noon and I was kind of thinking about taking a break at noon, allowing everyone to kind of get lunch. Uh, do you have anything you're locked into timelines this afternoon?
I actually think I have a one o'clock budget um software call.
At one o'clock, yes.
Okay, um, how long would you think that'll take?
I'm not sure if it's gonna save.
I bet it's an hour, but I have a two o'clock doctor appointment, so I'm all things.
Oh, well, do you?
We can probably get through this pretty quick if we want, if we choose to.
Okay, yeah, true. Sure, okay, all right, I will, I will have a problem to me.
We're sleeping with John, Thailand tomorrow.
I, I actually, I looked at the next pages, so I wasn't sure how much more we have.
Okay, so just carrying on with reserves, you know, is there other, other targets or other dollars you feel it's prudent to set aside? Um, for. Projects or capital down the road, something like that. I just am asking a question in case there, there were already thoughts and ideas floating around.
I would, I would like to. Be start a fund for the fairgrounds. But I don't know where.
I guess I would entertain that, but we also have the ability to give them a little bump in what they've got. They currently get about forty thousand, right?
Yeah, it fluctuates just about our budget, I mean, but.
We could give somewhere closer to sixty-five. For an annual budget with that.
I'd be happy if that, that's within our.
I learned in my short period of time. And, and the fairgrounds is a high need too, so.
I was just thinking of maintenance things, but, and so.
Well, that sixty-five thousand, i- if we, if we can make some commitment to them that every year that number is there. Plus a little bit of the inflation factor, you know, we can attach property taxes, we can attach something. Then you have the ability for the fair board to plan and go, okay, the, the, here's what we've gotta move forward to. Obviously, capital projects, we're still gonna step in and help out and, and, and talk about those, um, and approve those. But from a deferred maintenance standpoint and just keeping the facility literally upright. Um, they have to have a, a dollar figure that's every year kind of planned on.
You know, um, I got some old cars on my place, I could sink a lot of money into those to, to keep them running. I could also take, I could probably save money by just getting a better car and not be sinking money into it. So when we talk about putting, giving them more money or in giving them a bump. Uh, which I, I don't have a problem with, because I think that the fairgrounds needs work. Uh, it's just, uh, I think I'd like to be more specific. In the work that we think needs to be done. If we say this building is dilapidated and needs maintenance, that's one thing, but if. If we bump them up twenty thousand dollars and they go spend that twenty thousand dollars on something else, um.
That's why we have a liaison.
Yeah, and, and they have, their master plan is almost complete, isn't it? So I was hoping that master plan was pretty specific in the needs of capital construction.
Right.
Um, or long-term plans and so.
But then capital dis, construction, they have to come to us anyway and come and talk to us about.
Right. Right.
So bumping them up another twenty thousand dollars from me, from my mind, I'm kind of thinking, um. Is it just, what, what's the goal? Is the goal could be?
I see where you're going, you don't want to put lipstick on a pig, you know, but.
But we gotta, yeah, but the facilities.
I mean, the facilities needs work, it needs maintenance and everything else, but then again, we're trying to, we're trying to rebuild old construction, not simply trying to put new paint on it. Um, uh, if we're gonna rebuild, we're gonna rebuild. I don't, we don't wanna go repave the road a year before we go grind it up. And, and resurface the whole thing, so.
But we definitely can't be married, don't know whether.
No.
Two or three years, so they're going to have to be, literally keeping things up.
No, can't, we can't. But.
Can you, um, can you reflect your additional money on their master plan? Like, we're gonna give you this, but we wanted to correlate with the master plan, you gotta have a plan here.
That's.
I will, I will.
Maybe, maybe just the sentiment that we want to do more, we want to work on more out there, we wanna work with more maintenance. But I think their argument needs to be made as to what exactly we're looking to put these additional dollars into. For, for maintenance or capital.
For me, it doesn't take much to walk through those buildings, so yeah, I can see where twenty thousand dollars could go.
Well, I'm.
I mean, but that's me.
You could put, you could put a hundred thousand dollars in those buildings, I mean, easily, but if you're going to be rebuilding the building, I mean, what's.
Yeah.
I haven't seen the master plan recently and it's not even fully done yet, so, um.
But we have a master plan on ours to rent that was made in two thousand fifteen or twelve.
Yeah.
That we've never done a thing with, and so we need to start acting on these plans. Doesn't do any good to have a plan if we don't do anything about it. So.
Okay.
Okay, so I didn't, I don't think we'll add any money for specifically reserved this time. I just made this note about the railroad Christie Grant match. Um, just so it's kind of in our minds and we're hoping that the state comes through with some dollars that would reduce our match obligation and we could use state dollars instead, but. Um, as we go through this budget build, my, my intent in this budget build is not to budget almost any county match. Because our county match would be the last dollars that we'd spend, almost. We're gonna spend the two point nine and the loan first. We're gonna spend these like rails dollars first, we're gonna spend a lot of other match dollars first, we're gonna do the last one, yeah.
This is the last.
But I also don't want us to get into the thing where year three, we're gonna have a four and fifty thousand. Okay, so, um, as information keeps moving on that grant, this, you know. Will determine what we might plug in, just as a placeholder if we want to on grant match, that's sure, that's next, but yeah. Okay, admin fee calculations. This is always everybody's favorite topic. I'm surprised the room is not packed. What I, let's start out with, uh, just a little, a little bit of the history and the need for admin fees. General fund provides a lot of services to all the other funds and departments. And when we're providing services to uh funds and departments that are funded federally. We have to follow federal guidelines on what can be included in that indirect cost allocation um program. We have had, you know, different federal reviews of our process, specifically public health. We get funded through WIC, which is a federal program. And during those federal reviews, we did change a few things. Um, so we have had. Uh, dialogue with agencies on our indirect cost allocation program. But we have six departments that we use to allocate costs throughout the, the county. The first one is IT. And we look at, we always look at the prior actuals, we don't look at budgeted numbers, we look at what we actually spent to recoup those costs going forward. So IT, um, is our, you know, our, our contracts with ACTTEC to provide service. It also is our email, our internet, our phone. And then computer replacement program and server replacement program. What ACTTEC does for me is they provide a account of the devices that they support. And they weight those devices. For instance, like email doesn't take them much time to support, so that's a low, low priority item. It's like a point five of a scale. But the servers that they have to support is, it's a three. Okay, so they, they do this physical inventory of all the devices they support, look at people. And then they give me this weighted support figure that I plug in to allocate that, that true cost through everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's IT. It's nice that that one actually is like quantifiable. I go see this, see this number and then have a, a formula spit something out. Um, business services, the next one. This is Nikki and Jay's department. We split their costs, we say sixty percent of their time is based on HR payroll functions. And forty percent on AP. I don't know how accurate that would be if we actually did have time to be there. Um, we might be weighting AP a little bit heavily there, but that's. Um we might be weighting AP a little bit heavily there, but that's that's what our best guess was a few years ago, stayed with that. So for the payroll percent of their department, we use our workers' benefit fund payment to allocate across all funds and departments. So the workers' benefit fund is paid per hour worked. So it's a good, it's a good, okay, if you have more people working and working more hours, that's gonna take more of our payroll and our HR time. So again, a pretty um quantifiable way to move um or to charge back dollars. AP um is based on prior year check count and EFT count per funded department. Um so for nineteen twenty, there were two thousand nine hundred and eighty-three payments made. Um and then I can put those through funds and departments and see how many of those transactions each funded department is. We discount the road department because they are actually putting, they're they're doing their own data entry. Okay, so Nikki's able to grab a file from Christie and download it into our system and then kick out those checks. The reason we can't say, okay, road department, you don't pay any AP costs is because that's not where the process ends. You know, obviously, we're printing a check, we're, you know, mailing it, we're submitting um information to IRS for ten ninety-nines. We're having to handle if that check was, you know, incorrect or comes back and replacing checks, all of those things. So the process doesn't stop with the data entry. A- a- along those lines too, the rest of the process is the audit. The the official records for our AP are up here in the courthouse. And so, you know, they're looking at our documentation for signatures, for approvals, for all of those things. So data entry is just a small piece of it. I'm bringing this up a little bit too, is because over time, if we change how that AP process works, we may have to rethink this admin fee policy on AP. If we're gonna have more data entry done at different levels, then we need to kind of sit down and relook at what what the admin fee, how it how it's provided.
It might be good to do time studies and things going forward, I'm fine with the algorithm right now, what we're using, but I mean, go forward, wouldn't hurt. So that when we come around the budget next year, we can say, based on the time study,
Yeah, absolutely.
we can use a different method.
Because I I would say, since I've been here, I would think that HR has become a whole lot more time. Significant more time.
I I I don't wanna say it, but yeah.
So and and I don't even know if eighty twenty is fair, but I would think it's something more longer than that.
Probably closer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, county council, this is another, this is one that's not very quantifiable. Um a long time ago, I'd go to Jen Bailey and go, okay, so how much time do you think you spent for each of these funding departments? And he'd go, hmm, I don't know. And then I might give him a number and his typical response, you know, well, looks good, yeah, okay. So that that did not work great over time. And so the commissioners chose to take on more of that cost yourselves. So right now, I allocate quite a chunk of county council to the commissioner's mansion. And then it's very little most throughout the rest of the funds and departments. Okay, 'cause he is available to everybody.
Right.
You know, I I ask for advice on different things, um everyone's kind of been told, hey, if you're getting contract reviewed, make sure you use Jen Bailey.
Yeah, right.
You know, so everyone has access to his counsel and but you guys are gonna pay more, so that, okay. My department is.
So you got a ninety can't split?
Yeah.
And that's.
I try, I think right now I need to actually modify a little bit, 'cause when I double checked it, it was about an eighty eight twelve split. So I need to get it back to the commissioners at ninety and get it filtered through on.
Got you.
The treasury department is allocated according to prior year actual revenue excluding several things. I exclude beginning fund balances, transfers, inter-fund services, repayment of loans and capital grants. So we're not going to, I mean, back to this grant discussion, I'm not gonna hit the railroad really hard with an admin fee based on a five point six million dollar grant. You know, that's, we we exclude that part of it. Um so it goes off of revenue. Last year, we had quite a discussion about changing that formula, so that was a portion off of revenue and a portion based on transactions. When I looked at a fifty fifty split, the the transaction based cost was too high for some funds that literally have a daily revenue transaction. I I have dollars that come in every day from the clerk's office that go into the corner monumentation fund. And if I do a transaction count there, it is, it takes almost every dollar revenue out of there. So that wasn't quite fair, I looked again at a quarter, I I did like, okay, seventy-five percent based on revenue amount, twenty-five percent based on receipt count, it still was high there. I don't, I mean, I and I get that um it's it's a it's a hard, like, it's a hard cost to look at and like feel like it's justified. All I can say is that my day with that receipt does not end with the physical receipt either. You know, again, there's audit costs that go along with the revenue, there's the federal expenditures that we have to prove we're spending them appropriately. It's the research on, do I have investment opportunities to increase returns for the county, you know, so that my day doesn't end or my my work doesn't end with the one receipt. There's more to it than just that, so I don't, again, I don't have a a better metric to use yet, but I'm open to looking at something different for that department, my department. I also need to clarify too, I discount my um cost by thirty-three percent. So what I do is I say, okay, on my day, I'm gonna say an average of thirty-three percent of my day is actually tax district work. So I'm only allocating two thirds of my day to county operations. I'm saying a third of my day is involved with day goals and allocating taxes. And I think that's fair. Um if I were to do a time study, that probably doesn't always go through, but I think it's fair in this in this setting.
So where does the administrative fees actually go?
Comes into general fund. Um yeah, so it's in department one hundred, it's in general fund. The commissioners, uh we, there's quite a bit of federal rules around your general, I don't speak up here, your general governing uh roles and that that's a general government expense, it can't be allocated. What can get allocated is Melanie's time and some travel time when you're representing the county. And so um that's what I'll say about your your department. Central services is um another one that I wish could be more quantifiable, but it's not. It's an estimate of use. What we use central service dollars for are the audit, the budget preparation, paper expenditures, the postage meter, uh the wellness program. There's a, there's, they should always be county wide and county available expenditures in that department. And then we go, okay, everyone should kind of have a little bit of a cost of that audit. You know, it's not, it's not just, you know, general fund that's getting audited, it's everybody.
Right.
And so it's difficult to come up with something that works perfect there for central services. But right now, it's just a, okay, what what looks right or fair and reasonable on however many thousands of dollars we use for central services.
Is that like collection bill?
It's sixty-seven thousand dollars. Now, the electric bill actually have goes to courthouse. So it's it's, the audit's uh thirty thousand, budget prep really is only about twenty-five hundred papers, about, oh, and and then uh AOC, our our AOC membership comes out of there. Well, everybody kind of gets access to AOC resources and and um logging for us, and so that's that's another cost that kind of gets spread through. So a lot to throw at you um on admin fees, but I think it's worth the discussion every year. So there's both understanding and then ideas and discussion around it, so. Um again, you don't have to, if if you think of a policy change or or wanna discuss a different way of doing that, you can send it on. It's it's, as I know. So right now, I started like.
Sorry, I'm just going to add, some departments don't think it's fair. So if you guys could think of anything, maybe with Steve, you know, committing beat up occasionally about it.
So, yeah.
Well, I think we probably, all three of us get beat up about it, but you get beat up a lot about it.
Um. Does, is, does the guys recall when I first got here, I I was the one who put my foot in in into this door at first? So we we came, we we talked about this, we went in circles, trying to find a better way of allocating uh and capturing that admin cost, um something that would be more fair. And we had come up with kind of an idea, you had punched together some numbers and.
That's that transaction based on revenues, which it didn't, it didn't pencil out to be quite as fair and equitable, I think, as we hoped, so.
Well, to some people, right.
Right.
Yeah, so no, but that's just it, you're, it's give and take.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh it's the same pie and and everyone wants to see their amount decreased. Um there were some that definitely were paying more than others. And when we decreased theirs, others paid more.
Right.
That's all there was to it.
Right.
Uh so.
Yeah, here, if if the choice is we're going to allocate, I'll use one simple, if we're going to allocate the internet cost,
Right.
then once we said we're going to allocate that, that that's the amount, and then you get to choose how you're going to allocate it, that that amount doesn't change.
Right.
It's the actual cost. Um I and I, I, there's it's nice that we've been reviewed by federal agencies. So it it's met their test of, okay, this is this is fair and reasonable in their their eyes. Um they can, it can get better though. Or we can choose, we can also choose, maybe we're not gonna allocate some cost too. But then there's there's some, there's some fairness that has to be discussed out there too.
Right, and actually, I I don't mind revisiting this, you know, kind of one on one. The other commissioners have some questions on this, it's perfectly fine. Um you know, we've kind of pitched it as a possibility before, we've we've never acted on it. Because, like you said, it wasn't necessarily the.
What percent of the budget did?
Um you know, I don't look at percent of budget, but for um it.
Based on transactions.
The one department here that was a little bit frustrated with admin fees, their total admin fee is two point six seven percent of their revenue, of their revenue. You know, and you you think about federal grants that allow like ten percent of minimum admin fee, well, I don't think we wanna do that to anybody. Um overall oh, I, let's see, on their revenue, I thought that, I thought that. I think that, oh, I do, I do have part of the sheet, I I don't have that.
Okay.
I do, I do on a spreadsheet then.
We're talking less than three percent.
Builds up. Uh yeah, the the admin fee, again, when we all know, we're talking about the road department. The admin fee to the road department is less than three percent of their revenue. So and that's the total admin fee, that includes their IT admin, that includes uh business services, that includes central services, that includes all of it. And then I I I've provided some even back in time history about admin fees. I keep dating myself when I say this, but when I first started, um the road department was charged a hundred twenty-five thousand off, just like point blank. Um and and some of that went to the clerk's office for uh accounts payable stuff, some of it went to IT for computer stuff, some of it just went everywhere. Well, over time, federally, that was not fair and and reasonable and justifiable. 'Cause it didn't even start with the cost, it just was like, hey, you're gonna give us a hundred twenty-five thousand. So over time, this process has been in place and been agreed upon to to the, to the extent it can be. And their admin fee we're looking at this year is eighty-four thousand. And I think some of it too is uh um for for, we we just all probably need to do a better job of explaining what we do, you know, the services that can be provided, what what the work is and, you know, does entail. The reports that we do on behalf of everybody. I think sometimes we have departments that don't even understand the amount of reporting we're doing on their behalf from other requests or audit work or things like that. And so some of it's just our own, we're doing our, we're doing our work and doing what we've done, but it's not well explained.
Good.
Alright, um I have a few, couple, sorry, I'll be really fast on these things. Um in our new software conversion, I got to spend quite a bit of time with our auditors on our chart of accounts. One of the things that came up and has come up in the past even is our number of funds and specifically reserve funds that aren't in the audit world and accounting world technically um supposed to be there. So specifically, I'm talking about the one oh five communications fund, one oh six insurance, one oh eight vehicles. The one in that designation means it's all general fund supported anyway. So what I would propose, if if you guys are um agreeable to this, is creating departments within general fund for those functions. They're all general fund anyway. And so the reserve dollars still stay out there because it's easier to manage those pots of reserve dollars when they're out on their own, they don't get co-leveled in into an operational cash flow. So you know, I I will see if you guys are okay with that or not, and we can discuss keeping it the same. You know, if if they're their own funds, but they're again supported completely by general fund. The others were the road funds. Um and Christie sat at my desk this summer when we were talking about the chart of accounts conversion, and she was agreeable to that as well. So the road department has three reserve funds, and I would combine them into one reserve fund. Okay, so that we don't have fund two oh three, two oh four and two fifty-four, let's just have one. And we can have specific reserves in there, we can have an insurance reserve, we can have an equipment reserve, we can have an operational reserve. You know, so they're split clear there, yeah.
Right, but you just have one reserve account, yeah.
And then, like we do with reserve accounts, when the need is there to tap into those reserve dollars, we budget for it and we transfer it to the operational fund for expenditure or we spend in the fund for the purchase, so.
It was split out in the past, you're proposing a loan.
Yeah, I am. And the auditors, he's he's like, I will jump for joy if you're willing to do this, and he highly recommends it, he says, but that's that's my spiel on that. We can talk anymore, hold on. And then back to balancing general fund, when I am sitting there and I get all the information back from the managers, can, the list that I have is that I would go to contingency first to balance um the fund reserves second. And then thirdly, to transfers that fund operations outside of general fund. And lastly, cutting materials and services across uh general fund places that I would have to. So if you're acceptable to that, that will be my process.
That's what's been noted in the past?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um the only thing that I would just, you know, throw in there is a lot of the con- small contingencies that are built into each budget. And I would say with each department, they have their own contingencies and their own methods of making sure that they have you know, padding, so to speak, in in their own budgets, so.
That's typically in the Charles and Services.
Yeah, typically it is.
Are you wanting me to bump that one up in my list where I go?
No, no, it doesn't need to be bumped up, it's just, um I know, I know it's there, so and that's it it's not that I don't want the departments to have padding
Right.
and to a certain extent, and keep from having to go into appropriating other dollars when they fall short, but uh we just need a more realistic picture of what it actually costs to do business sometimes. Appropriating other dollars when they fall short, but uh we just need a more realistic picture of what it actually costs to do business sometimes. And I wanna encourage the department heads to. Be mindful of kind of where we're headed, um and I, yeah, there there's some really good things on the horizon, and there's some concern on the horizon too, so that's just my perspective.
Well, no, and I talk about it every year, we um. We are required by our union contracts to move salaries like we're seeing, at least two and a half percent, plus they get a step, so sometimes people are moving.
Right.
Seven and a half percent, and that doesn't include furs or health insurance increases. So those salary increases take up quite a percentage of any revenue increases we get from property taxes, which we're only allowed three percent on value increases. But it's very, very rare that we actually see that because of.
Yeah.
Assessed values overall, um and what the state can essentially assess to properties, which are significant part of our taxation.
Right. And in fact, in Lake County, we could be seeing that decrease.
Yes.
So, yeah, it's just.
Yeah. In fact, we have, we have, which is unusual, but we have seen our property taxes go down.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Which, so isn't necessarily a bad thing for the taxpayer, so.
And then we have. Well, it's not like, I don't think the individual taxpayers saw theirs go down, we just saw the corporations have theirs go down.
Yeah, it's true.
Alright, thank you for your time, it's a lot to throw at you, um so you know, you know where I live and work, so.
No, thank you. Mm-hmm.
Come talk if you have more ideas.
No, it's good, thank you guys, thank you, good point.
That's so good, so good.
Alrighty, so I guess with that, um no further business, we will close and adjourn the meeting at twelve thirty-two.
You're only overshadowed by half hour, if you can.